Board members is participating electronically. Ms. Hall, can you take the roll call, please?
Yes, we have Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Hollerback.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Dr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would ask for everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask if there's a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will be starting with our presentation by BWP and Associates of the results of our recent community engagement process. This was planned weeks in advance as part of our approval. So I will turn this over to Dr. Kastner and Dr. Harris.
Dr. Harris is going to have the first few slides. I'm going to turn this now over to Wayne. And when you want me to advance after the first slide, which has the pictures of all the board members, just tell me, Wayne.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Madam Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Kastner, it is my pleasure and Dr. Kastner's pleasure to be back with you and to share with you the result of the community engagement activities that started to occur on July 19 with approximately 62 members of the administrative staffs of the schools, continuing with individual interviews of the week leading up to July 28th and 29th, during which time we had multiple individual meetings, group meetings, forums, opportunities for anyone who wanted to share with us what they wanted us to look for in candidates to be considered for interviews so that the board could select the next superintendent. I don't think we need to remind the board that the most significant action you take as a board is to select the superintendent of schools. You have taken that responsibility very seriously, understanding how important it is for the community to give input. And I will tell you that you should be very pleased that a cross-section, a significant cross-section of the community, meaning employees, students, parents, business leaders, civic leaders, faith organizations, just a wide range, a microcosm of the Stafford community participated in the opportunities that the board provided to give input. Just a brief word about the process. As we collected that information, our goal was to ensure that we captured the essence of what was shared with us. In addition to all of the meetings that we held, the interviews that we held, you also put on the website a link to three questions so that people who were not able to participate in those face-to-face interviews or meetings, that they could respond as well. And there were significant numbers, which Dr. Kastner will talk with you about, who gave feedback and input, what are the qualities and characteristics you want in your next superintendent? We have taken all of that information, gone through and looked for the significant reoccurring statements, the patterns and the themes under each of the three questions, and put together then a draft leadership profile. So this evening, we will be presenting to you a copy, a comprehensive copy of the report, and then we will walk through the process, what responses we heard. And I want to move to the next slide to say that there were four specific objectives related to the community engagement. We want to remind everyone what they were. So Kevin, if you'll go to the next slide.
It's been advanced, Wayne.
Okay. First and foremost, the purpose of the community engagement was to identify the perceived strengths and challenges that the next superintendent in Stafford County would face. Next, and maybe the essence of everything that we wanted to know, we wanted individuals to identify the desired qualities, characteristics, and experiences the next superintendent should possess and demonstrate. Third, we wanted to build community understanding and support for the process because after all, your next superintendent will flourish given support from throughout the community, from the board, from employees. And finally, to ensure that the broadest possible community participation in the process would occur, which allows us then to be able to determine who are the best match and fit as we finish interviewing, as we go through and vet candidates to determine who is the best fit match to the leadership profile, which we will present to you in draft form tonight. Kevin, you can take it from there.
Thanks, Wayne.
Dr. Kastner, you can take your mask off for speaking up there. That'd be great.
Thank you. One of the things that you have before you this evening, and the public needs to know, the board members are just receiving this. And what we will be presenting tonight will become public record. And members of the public using the district website will have, in essence, a 97-page report. I'm going to explain what's in the report, and then I'm going to go through a few slides, and we're going to outline some of the materials. Beginning of the report, it pretty much has a summary of the process that we went through. And then it has quantitative data where we are summarizing the strengths, weaknesses, and qualities and characteristics that will then lead to a draft leadership profile. The thing that's most important, though, after the first, actually, 11 pages, after the first 11 pages, we then have the information when we had our focus group meetings where we recorded what we heard from the public, their words, not ours. In the focus group meetings, in the forums, pages 13 through 20, and we actually grouped our people together, you see their comments where they talked about strengths, challenges, qualities, and characteristics. More significantly, an idea came through staff, actually Sandra had something to do with that, and we did something we've never done before. We opened the website so that the community could answer the same questions that we were asking the people that attended the informational meetings that we had. We've never done this before. Normally, we would have a quantitative survey in which we would have had, you know, maybe 1,000 responses. The upside on this is we had 573 people participate. The downside, and I don't think it's a significant downside, is that normally, when we receive things, when people will write in emails to us, or even to the point of making a comment at the last section of the survey, we screen those comments. We never allow a particular person's name to be out there. In this case, because this is a school system website, verbatim, all comments are there. Therefore, we did not edit, we did not dedact any people's names. The long and short of it, there isn't anything there that's that alarming. In fact, in some cases, it talks about specific people in a most positive way, including your own superintendent. But of course, that doesn't mean you're going to have 100% of this or 100% of that. There even was a comment for Dr. Benson. Again, I don't think there's any problem with that, but it's better to err towards transparency than not. And maybe, I don't know if people are going to have the time to want to read the 70 or 80 pages that's there, but at least it's there in spirit. So we're going to be using that information. Board members, the first 11 pages or so are going to be the essence of our report. When you get into the appendices and everything, you're starting with this wide-angle lens, and then we're condensing it into a zoom lens. And you'll have the opportunity, if you choose, to read that, as would be your public. So I do want to commend that when a school board invites a team like ourselves from BWP to become into your community, you're allowing us to see everything. We're not putting what we hear, we're using this information to have you know what we're hearing from the community against your own knowledge. The other thing we do when we talk to members of your community, we tell them that during the days that Wayne described that we were here, that you still have another three weeks or so that any board or any community member can still share their thoughts with you. If they think we've missed something, they should tell you. And they should have conversations with you and talk about the main issue, what you're looking for in the qualities and characteristics. So what we did, per your direction, we actually did a targeted community engagement process. And in so doing, we were talking about going into these three questions that you see before you, the strengths, the challenges, and the qualities and characteristics. This first slide here, we recently have been using this with BWP. It's called Qualtrics. And I think your system also uses it when you get involved in community surveys. But when you look at the, all the information that we took in from the forums, and also what came in from your website, all those names came in there, and then this, in essence, is what we try to do. We try to find out what are the things that most repeat. And everything that you have up there, where you talk about the students, the teachers, the communication, frankly, it just shows in a, I guess, a metaphor, how this thing all comes together. Now here's where it looks like. When we talk about the strengths, the thing that topped itself in every conversation was excellent teachers and dedicated staff, committed teachers, principals and staff. So your people are the top strength. Other comments, again, these aren't up here because they were said one time. They're up here because they were repeated through all venues that we had. The diversity of the great students in the community, the multicultural connections, the strength of the educational options and programs, the variety of programs to meet the needs of diverse students, whether it's going to be through special education, ESOL, career in tech, other choices that students have, whether they're going on to dual courses through your colleges, all this was noted. The strength of your district, now, is this going to help in recruiting? Yes, it is, because you have a great location, you have a unique blend of urban, suburban, and rural. You have the live-hers, and you have the come-hers, and you have the military. All of that creates a pattern for your community. It is a reputation that attracts family and a good place to raise families. You have a supportive community, you have parental involvement, you have community values, and you support your schools. And this means as much as also not just the school system, but the combination with the support from the county government. You also, it came out more often than I would have expected without having the time to be here, that Stafford strives to maintain a small-town atmosphere even as it continues to grow. You know this, I didn't. But people know that, and that's one of the things that they value. And it's the type of thing they value when maybe you can't have as many competitive salaries, which sometimes people might choose to go north. What you have here with this field might not be captured if someone would work in some of the larger systems. So when you go through these strengths, you can find, when you go through the whole appendices, that this is what, in our opinion, would they narrow down to. Now you probably know all this, but I can say now, we've confirmed this through the efforts of the process that we've used. Now, we're going to go to looking at challenges. Again, when you look at this slide, you can see issues such as COVID, you can see issues like retention, you can see staff, you can see board, you can see teachers, you can see learning, and I guess the rather popular topic right now, you can see masks. All that came in. You can see pandemic, you can see growth. Now, when we're talking about actually getting into this, when you get into the challenges, funding, the challenge to have adequate funding to maintain competitive compensation for staff, support to continue to build additional schools and address an aging infrastructure. Regarding growth, you're talking about overcrowding of schools, the infrastructure need, creating high school six, impact on transportation, and redistricting. The need to continue building a relationship with the school board and the board of supervisors, and the reality of upcoming changes in leadership. Some board members that will be involved in the hiring of a superintendent won't be there when the superintendent might come on. The same thing is also true, as we've learned from the supervisors. So that whole issue is something that's going to have to be nurtured and grown and earned, that you want to continue something that is perceived, particularly when I talk to the county administrator, that there definitely has been progress in this, and he shared with me some of the documents he's been receiving that is giving him greater confidence as he's looking into how he's going to have to figure a way with his people in supporting growth. Challenges, again, on educational options and program. You want to continue to support your academic programs and all choices for your top students, but you also want to support your CTE, and you're going to need continued support for technology. And a lot of this issue, as you increase diversity, you're going to have different needs that you're going to have, whether it's going to be ESOL, whether it's going to be students that you have wellness issues, any of these type of things mean you can't necessarily maintain a status quo as the complexity of your school system increases. And that's just a reality that you're going to have in growth. You're not going to get less diverse, you're not going to get smaller. And again, you see other societal issues that are coming into play from year to year, as we'll talk about a little bit later. The issue of equity, balancing the needs of schools and the programs and providing resource to support all students with a system of 30,000. Again, we're talking a significant school system, maybe 1% in the country that's going to be this size. This creates a complexity that will be part of a skill set that a leader should have. Not anyone necessarily is going to have that type of experience. It's not unusual. In fact, I can't imagine there's any system that we've worked with in the previous years. The issue of achievement gap, eliminating disparity in discipline with students of color, this type of thing, data-driven, are the type of things that you're trying to move forward to make this work as best as you can for all students. So diversity, the need to expand programs to support the needs of all students, and also increase the diversity of your staff, that your staff can look more like your student body. So you're still talking about quality, but you're also talking about the extra effort and also the competition that you're going to have with a lot of the systems going after these same strong people. You also have an issue that came up time and again, the pattern of continued change of a leadership. You've had too much turnover in superintendents. You haven't had a chance for someone. Wayne and I were fortunate. We both had about 12 years in a superintendency. That created continuity. As people come in and out, there's sometimes it's going to be some anxiety. It's not intentional, but the fact is, that's just part of a pattern that you want to continue to maybe do the best you can to find someone, as they say, going to live here, stay here. And you're going to look for that. You also have hot topics out there. And these hot topics are topics that your new leader is going to have to be maybe aware of, and whether it's issues of masks, critical race theory, particularly in parents. They went on record, and I could say probably 20 to 25 statements, they don't want to see it. They want to make sure you're not doing it. You're not doing it, we know that. But also issues on a difference of opinion on transgender accommodations, all of these are part of what school systems, not only in Virginia, are across the country are dealing with. The fact that you have to have someone that can work with a board with an agility to make this all work in a way that is best for all students. Not one group, the job of a board and a superintendent is to be strong for all students. You also have this last one that's a reality, the post-COVID issues that will address student learning and student wellness. You don't know the answers to this yet. We don't know what gaps have occurred during this last year with perhaps some of our more needy students, but also students that miss the social interaction. How's this going to come up when you're going to be seeing issues in your schools with your counselors? What patterns are there going to be? What are we going to learn from what worked in technology, what didn't work? How about the attention span as the kids come back after they've been on the computer? Has there been any downsides? Has there been any upsides? Whatever it is, you're not going to return to where we were. That is an issue that's a challenge. All the systems are facing it. At this point, I'm going to start with this slide on the skills and characteristics. As you can see, a lot of these things have to do with experience, leadership, the superintendent. I also do want to note that in the information that we received when you're looking at this report, that was very complimentary of your present superintendent. There were a lot of things regarding his visibility in the schools and how he has worked with the students particularly, and Scott, you're to be to commend it. They might take a shot or two in there, but I'm saying overwhelmingly, what we saw was a very positive impression that you've made. I just want to note that. Now, as we're getting into the skills and characteristics, I'm going to turn this back over to Dr. Harris, and I'm going to put this slide here. Wayne, I have this slide up that has instruction, communication, management, and personal qualities, and I know you're going to take this now through to the draft leadership profile.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kastner, as we listened to the comments, what qualities, characteristics, and experiences do you want us to look for? People shared honestly with us, and at one point, as we were reading back what we had heard, someone said, "You're never going to find anybody who comes with all of that." Let me reassure the board and the community, there are excellent candidates who will be good, match, and fit to be your next superintendent. We believe that based on our experience having done 35, 40 searches, and the fact that already, as of today, there were 17 applicants and others who have contacted us, waiting until the profile is posted so that they can complete their applications. As we looked through all of the comments from all of the various ways that people shared with us, we were able to put into four different categories what we heard them say, and these categories are broad, and when I describe the leadership profile, I think it will help unpack what some of this means. So the four categories of what we heard is, they want a superintendent who is excellent and successful in the areas of instruction, communication, management, and personal qualities. Let me be a little more specific. In the area of instruction, candidates that would match and fit would be innovative, have a clear understanding of post-COVID issues, and I'd like to add, I'm not sure we're at post-COVID yet, given the resurgence of variants and the number of students and others who have contracted. The bottom line is, the next superintendent will have demonstrated effectiveness dealing with COVID issues, will have experience, boots on the ground, meaning experience as a teacher and administrator, so that they will clearly understand what it's like to be in a school as they provide support to school staff. Strong track record of positive student achievement and closing learning gaps, and the ability to provide leadership with hot topic issues, critical race theory, transgender, mask, social justice, and the list goes on. In the area of communication, over and over again, the next superintendent must be an excellent communicator and demonstrate the willingness to collaborate, be a good listener. The students were very clear that met with me. They want an approachable person. One young lady said to me, "A superintendent who's going to come, sit down and listen to me, come to my class, be in the school, but also be visible in the community, someone who is a relationship builder, a team builder, and who will be honest in sharing information, demonstrate transparency, and who is willing to work with all segments of the community." In the area of management, experience in a district similar to Stafford County, someone who is politically astute, we heard politically savvy, someone who is non-politician, apolitic, someone who is not going to lean in one political direction or the other, will understand, have an understanding of what diversity, the advantages of a diverse community, someone who will support equitable distribution of resources, experience with growth and infrastructure management, and the ability to build relationships with the school board and in turn, work with the board and the board of supervisors effectively. And in personal qualities, we heard over and over again, honest, straightforward, carriage, transparent, will make a long-term commitment to invest in the community, to be a part of the community, to live here and work here, someone who will promote trust and openness, and will have demonstrated successful experience dealing with equity and diversity. Those are the four broad categories with explanations of what people said they want us to look for. We then took all of this information We then took all of this information, really looked deeper and developed then the leadership profile. So we are, I will discuss with you now, the draft leadership profile that we're recommending that you approve so that it can be posted with the vacancy announcement. Kevin, if you'll go to that first slide, building the leadership profile.
The slide on building leadership profile is there with the two bullets, Wayne. Tell me when you want me to advance it.
I don't need to reiterate that. Essentially, those two statements describe then what is next. And what is next then is the leadership profile draft. There are 13 statements on three different slides, and I'm going to quickly walk through them. But the opening simply shares with candidates as they read it that the school board and the stakeholders have identified the qualities they believe will lead to success. So then the individual that the board will appoint, first and foremost, will have successful experience in a school district similar to Stafford County, proven track record of managing resources effectively, promotes a collaborative style in identifying and seeking solutions to complex issues such as growth and facilities. And I would add to that, the other hot topic issues that we have talked about. Second, strong instructional background, documented success in improving student achievement, both overall and for subgroups, will make a commitment to Stafford County with the intention to stay for a long tenure and to make lasting changes. Next slide. The sensitivity to and experience with issues of diversity, equity, and parity. Over and over again, you saw this as a challenge and a concern. We heard this in the comments about what we wanted, they want in a next superintendent, and it will appear in the leadership profile. The next superintendent must demonstrate the ability to successfully address the issues of diversity, equity, and parity. Communication and collaboration skills to build relationships. Visible, approachable, building relationships, increase unity, promote trust, and exhibit transparency. Do you see these reoccurring themes over and over again? Person who is strategic, innovative, and forward-thinking. And finally, will understand the issues facing schools during the present and not-so-distant future pandemic issues, will plan and implement strategies to support students' learning during this time. Kevin, finally, go to the next one. And there are five statements that conclude the leadership profile draft that we present to you for your approval tonight. Very first one, we heard this repeatedly. Someone who have the political skills and the integrity to build relationships that will facilitate cooperation among and between the school board, meaning first and foremost, to build a strong relationship with the school board so that the school board and superintendent are working together as a team, and in turn, the ability to help build strong relationships with the Board of Supervisors and the entire community. Demonstrate the ability to respond to current hot topic issues. I won't keep repeating that, you know what they are. Demonstrate the conviction to follow the current guidelines regarding teaching the approved curriculum in the areas of history, civics, and social studies. Demonstrate the, is politically savvy, nonpartisan, and has experience in supporting efforts of equity that guides what's best for students. And finally, an individual who is inclusive and collaborative, who understands issues around racism, social justice, and cultural competency. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is the draft document, the leadership profile, that we have put together based on the multiple comments that we heard during the community engagement process, and we presented to you in request that you review it and give us approval then to post it in order that applicants can complete their application. Kevin, back to you.
Here's what I'd like to share with the board. All this is coming at you for the very first time. We have 13 bullets. We're not asking you to get into wordsmithing here this evening. You need to look at the context of the report and see how the bullets that we have here are data-driven. However, if there's anything that doesn't quite capture what the majority of the board might want, then you need to make changes. That's why we say it's a draft. But I need it within a week. The reason I need it within a week is, candidates, when they fill an application out, they will try to match the profile once it becomes the board's profile. This is ours. And what was a way to do it is perhaps the board chair assigns a person to take any feedback from everybody over a short period of time and see maybe what suggestions might be. And then maybe at the next time you get together, to maybe have some sort of, all that information out there, and then get to a point where you can then have a discussion and see if you can reach the consensus. It's the type of thing that, I don't want a 4-3 vote on this. We want this to reflect you as a whole board. Again, I think, once you have the opportunity to see this, there shouldn't be nothing up here that's a significant surprise. Now, I'm well aware that you had a previous leadership profile within the last three years. Many of these issues are still the same. Issues in many school systems are far more similar than different. But they also, as you noticed, some of the things up here on this reflect the time in schools now. And that's the type of thing that you're going to be looking for in the experience of who you might choose when we will recommend a slate of candidates to you. So regarding the leadership profile, Holly, if you want to make a comment on that, and then we'd like to go to our last slide, which is going to talk about next steps.
All right. Let me say something. I appreciate the work that has gone on and all those who have participated, and for you all to do the summary for us this evening. Board members, I know that if you would like to have additional time, or if you feel comfortable with the 13 bullets, if we feel comfortable having heard them, that is fine. I understand, you know, as we try and move through the process with the applications due September 1st, we don't want to wait till like August 28th to approve the profile. So let me just get a sense of where board members are on this document and how to proceed best. Any thoughts? Dr. Chase?
I think there are a few things that perhaps need a little bit of tweaking, but for the most part, I think it looks pretty good. But yeah, there are a couple of things that I'd like to see tweaked. So I would, go ahead. I'm sorry? Go ahead.
I thought you were going on this one.
I can go either way. Dr. Warner, go ahead.
I agree with, I agree with Dr. Chase. I think that for the most part, I think that this captures what we're looking for. I think there are just a couple of the statements that I would like to see reworded a little bit, just a couple of changes.
So what I don't want is to change the community's profile of seven people against the whole community. I want transparency. And I don't want no 4-3 vote, but if it goes 4-3, or whatever it is, it's about transparency. And no matter what, what we do, we want the community profile to be part of the community. And I may add things, but I won't subtract anything.
Well, I think we have to be sure that it is reflective of the information that we have received. So I think that, Ms. Randall.
Since he would like this back in a week, and we are meeting next week, is it a possibility for, as he suggested, someone to collect some thoughts and statements as we each takes our, take our time to review? And, you know, give it to that person to then at least collaborate a little bit with thoughts and ideas so that we can be ready to go next Tuesday?
That would be my thought. Ms. Hollerback, comment? Ms. Healy?
I'm just curious about what the doctors suggest needs to be tweaked. That's something we need to be looking at, because I agree with Ms. Young. This is a community, we have an impartial, I assume you're impartial, third party, has put this together from, you know, meeting with the community and going through, you know, these hundreds of comments that were suggested. So this is such a broad brush profile. You know, unless there's something that, you know, there's some offense with, I'd suggest we, we go with this. But if there's something particular you want to quote tweak, perhaps it's something we could discuss now unless you need more time to review it.
Well, go ahead.
I can speak somewhat. It looks to me like we have two bullet items that are specifically pointed towards critical race theory. I think that's such a small thing. And it worries me a little bit that demonstrates a conviction to follow the current guidelines regarding teaching approved history, civics, and social studies. I want them to demonstrate conviction to follow the entire curriculum. I don't care just about social studies. I care about math. I care about English. And I imagine most people in the community do as well. So that's a little bit of concern to me, that we've got two bullet points right after each other that are clearly pointed towards this one issue. So that, for me, I would prefer to not have that be quite so, so blatant there in terms of that. But that's just, you know, that's just me.
And I think that's a good question to raise, and I think that's a question for the, you know, the people who put this together.
Let me just share with you. We're not perfect at doing a leadership profile. We have it driven because some things came up multiple, multiple times. We don't want to overkill. I think the point you made about not just talking about social studies and history, there are issues out there right now on math. I just hadn't thought about that when I was putting that in. I don't think math necessarily came up when we were looking at the responses, but that would broaden what you're talking about. So we do think that it's good for a board to have some deliberation. We don't want a rubber stamp. You're not a rubber stamp board. We know that. We want you now, because each of you bring your own thing, to maybe take the time. You might just tweak a few things. And if for some reason, and it's very possible, if you could get this down to 10, great. To tell you the truth, we were, we were under the gun getting this thing done. And you know how when you do these things, if you go back to them, you can just tweak it even more and more, but we just decided we'd want to get it out there, because we know that you're going to have an opportunity maybe to improve upon it. So that's just part of the process. But I do appreciate if you can have it done by the next board meeting. Wayne?
Kevin, may I, may I just respond to, I think it was Dr. Chase who raised a question about those two items. As we thought about how to summarize the number of comments around first and foremost, critical race, and other issues related to critical race, there were also comments about teaching history, which is why that particular one appeared. And we didn't say the approved curriculum in general. I don't think it creates any issue to say what, Dr. Chase, what you said about the entire approved curriculum. I don't think that diminishes the comment that we heard. So I think you could, you could do that and take that out, and it would still reflect what we heard from those who gave us feedback.
And I'd just like to note that while you may not have heard about math, I have certainly heard from plenty of people in the public about concern about the math curriculum, as well as the social studies curriculum, as well as the arts curriculum, et cetera.
Sure, sure.
So. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, since Dr. Chase and I were the only two that raised this question, those were actually the same two bullet points that I was concerned about. And again, I have to agree that I want somebody who's convicted, has a conviction for the curriculum. I don't care, you know, what, what we're teaching, I just want to make sure that we are following acceptable standards in all, all areas. And math has come up, science has come up, history has come up. So, so that was the only, the only thing I said. And when we talk about hot topics, right now, critical race theory is a hot topic, transgender issues are a hot topic, there are a number of them. But if a superintendent has to be flexible enough to deal with any of those issues that come up, and has to be able to be prepared to address the community in a way that is sympathetic and understanding, and expresses an honest opinion about what we do. So, so I think that, I'm not trying to emphasize any one issue, and I realize that the community is currently very concerned about this, but I think that, you know, the superintendent, I think what we were trying to say, needs to reflect the ability to deal with any issue that comes up.
I just have a question, Madam Chair. The number of individuals that answered the question, are we saying statistically that the number reflect the 30,000 parents that are in our school system? Because I'm not even going to give credence to comments on, on some of these things, because people might throw words around and not really even know what they mean. If you could tell me what it means, then I will have a conversation with you about that. But unless then, I wouldn't even mention it. But my question is, statistically, are we saying that what we have on this paper here is reflective of our whole school system parent-community body?
Yes.
Pamela, here's how I'd look at that. When we do a quantitative survey, and let's say, in Prince William County, for example, we had 5,000 responses on the form that they filled out. When I looked at the responses when we were at just 500, and then I looked at the responses when there were 5,000, they are almost within a percentage point. And when you have 597, I think it's reflecting a trend that you're the check and balance for if it's not right. The other thing, by having this document transparently there on your website, if there are other people whose voices would be different, then they need to come out and talk about it. And that's all part of the process. I'm not a statistician, but I do feel that this also seems to reflect very similar what you had when you had your previous search team. A lot of these things seem to be rather similar. So I have a confidence that we're pretty close. But I wouldn't suggest so that I'd want to get into knowing, you know, if it's 100% perfect. The other thing, though, that I am encouraged about, when I last talked to you in July, I didn't know if we were going to pull off this abbreviated version of community engagement. If we can say we had 700 people out there, and they're pretty sincere, we've honored their voices. And so I think that in itself was probably even better than we thought we could have done. And I think it's also because of the suggestion of opening it up on your website, that all of a sudden went far beyond just the groups that we met here in the forums and the meetings. So I don't know if that is a specific endorsement of this being 100% correct, but I do have confidence that I do think it's reflective.
All right. So for the board, we are meeting, I believe, next, um, on August 17th. My suggestion would be a, um, a work session type format for us to work on that. And then if we have a special call to approve, um, a particular, um, profile, what I would ask though is for everybody to have done their homework ahead of time, highlight, hone in on the specific areas or bullet points. So Dr. Kuzner, let me be, and Dr. Harris, let me be clear. So you are really asking for us to approve, is it this, this document or both documents?
The only thing we're asking you to approve is the leadership profile.
Which are the last, they're the last, um...
The 13 bullets on...
Yeah. Starting with slide, it begins on slide, uh, 12, 13, and 14. It's, it's those three slides which make up the, the content for the leadership profile.
Okay.
Also, it's page nine and 10 of the report. Our intention is it's verbatim, I hope it is, but the page nine and 10 of the report has the same bullets.
All right. So the focus will be the 13 bullets, potentially getting to 10, we'll see, um, for discussion next Tuesday. Is that, and then we can, um, so, um, let's talk about that when we get to board member, or, um, excuse me, committee comments about the 17th, and then we, we will work through the timing for that. So, um, any other comments at this point? All right. Oh, yes, Ms. Randall.
Um, can you tell me going forward, um, will we be getting updates at each meeting that will be shared with the public for each of our meetings?
You're, that's a perfect lead into our last slide as we're trying to reach closure here. Um, we're getting to a point that we would like to see the board approve the profile, and if you can do that at the next meeting, that's fine. Application deadline is September 1. We have 17 applicants. We'd be happy to provide the board chair where we stand as you have each of your next meetings with the applicant pool, the numbers. We certainly know that, um, we have not gotten into vetting candidates. In fact, we're out there talking to several that haven't yet applied. They are waiting for the profile. The other thing I want to make clear, and I've said this as we do searches, candidates are interviewing you every time you have a board meeting. And we know candidates have watched your board meetings. And they're saying, is this a place we want to work? So it's a two-way street here. And this is the time, even as you, and this is why I said, having a four-three vote on a profile, not a good thing when you're talking about trying to attract a candidate and how a board's going to work together as a team on this. What I have noted though, and I can say this even in Prince William County, when we had candidates watching some of their board meetings, there were three board meetings that went till 3:00 in the morning. But they went over these issues that are so prickly right now of whether you're going to, you know, have kids back in school, whether you're going to do math, whether you're going to do that. They aren't specific to once the school system gets back to, we hope, a new normal. So people have to understand that. And so they're smart enough to figure that out. They're in school systems themselves to know this. But it is also, you're in a fishbowl too. And when they end up applying, they're going to be in a fishbowl because we're going to do everything to scrutinize, to make sure there's no surprises in whatever they're going to be bringing to the table if we were going to say that they are recommended candidates for you. So we'll get to a point when we do make that recommendation, there'll be two things that happen. When we provide the slate of candidates for you, and we get to the point of saying, these are the ones that at least have hit 80% of the profile, that we have confidence that we're saying, if it doesn't go right, we'll do it over free with expenses in, in the next two years. Now, we haven't had that issue and we don't intend to start here. The other thing we'll do, there's another piece of document called Protocols, in which we talk about key things to know about interview process and what you can legally ask or not ask, and also give you some sample questions that are related for the profile that you might want to consider when you're doing interviews. So we aren't just, uh, we, once we present the candidates, then that's the last that will be part of this. At that point then, as you narrow it down and you go from perhaps a group of four to six, and then you get to the point of second interviews, you're going to want to consider of doing, um, some sort of a background check. And we can help you with that unless you have another means of doing it, but you, you need to do due diligence. It can't be just based upon the written documents that are in the candidate's application. And in that profile, we've got to look at social media, we've got to do Google searches, we have to look at legal issues, we have to, but the point being, most of these people are in school systems and they've been vetted pretty, pretty carefully. But there was a case, and this happened 10 years ago in Montgomery County, they had picked their superintendent. Great person. They did a background check and they found bankruptcy. That changed the game for them when you're dealing with such significant budgets. So you have to, in your process, what, and we recommend when you're getting into the finalists, you, you do need to do the due diligence on that. The other thing that I'll, I'll just say publicly, you're not going to get anybody here on a mixed vote. If people are going to bring their families here, we hope that we can, uh, you can come together. We'd like to make your job hard by bringing you great candidates, but in the end, it's your job to figure out who's the best match of who you want as your next superintendent for your community.
And I just would like to make the reminder to the board that we did discuss and as part of our motion, that this would be a confidential search, that, um, we will be protecting the privacy of anyone who is applying for this position. And I just make that reminder to the board and just to reiterate what, um, Dr. Kuzner and, um, Dr. Harris have given us tonight. So I appreciate you coming in, making the trek to, to us this evening, and we will be, um, back in touch after, um, next Tuesday with the final, hopefully our final report ready to move forward.
Madam Chairwoman, I had a, a question just about the, the next steps in the search process. And it was simply, um, in September, you will have prepared a slate of candidates and present us with those recommendations. Are you expecting us at that meeting to decide who to bring in for initial interviews? Because I would like to actually see the applications before I make that decision. So just wanted to find out what the process would be.
But Dr. Chase, um, we anticipate coming to the board in a closed session and sharing with you the top four to six candidates in the general neighborhood of the middle of September. When we share those candidates with you, we will share the entire list of candidates who have applied. You will have an opportunity, uh, we give you a list and you will see their last three jobs, their current salary, uh, and we will talk briefly about each candidate and explain why they are one of the top four, six, or why they are not. We will then walk through in alphabetical order, Kevin will do one, I will do one, and we will present the top four to six that we believe, based on everything we found out, that they, this candidate, that each of these candidates are good fits and matches, and we will recommend that you interview them. We will not promote those four to six, we will simply present them. We will give you a synopsis, a one-page synopsis that describes why we think they're best fit and match, and answer any questions.
Dr. Chase, I'm going to get to you, Pam. Just let me finish this thing. Each board member is going to have a Dropbox, and they're going to have a private password. And that Dropbox is going to have the entire application, it's going to have the resume, it's going to have all the references, it's going to have the transcripts, it's going to have the Google search. You can't make a decision in due diligence without perhaps having that advantage. So we aren't looking for you to make a quick decision. Uh, you need to be timely, but we wouldn't want that to happen. Normally, we used to do paper, and we used to collect it, put it in a room, and, and then everybody had to sign in and sign out. We can, uh, we can now have that efficiency with the Dropbox, and we have staff that will help any board member in having that type of an access. So again, we will be asking you, Wayne just mentioned, we'll give you a one-page overview that synop- is a synopsis of everything, but you need to do your own looking through. And, and so your point's well taken. Pamela, you had a question?
Ms. Young. Ms. Young.
Ms. Young, you have a question?
Yes. Um, so I think we, we had this question bef- I, I brought this question up before in reference to, um, how, how many, um, candidates we're going to be able to see. And I think, um, the conversation was about all, but now I'm hearing, and maybe, maybe it was my thought in my mind, but now I'm hearing, um, you're going to recommend four or six, and why you're going to recommend them. I would like to also know why you're not recommending the others that applied, even if it's a, uh, you know, you're going to give us, you know, their, their, their salary, et cetera, maybe a sentence or two, why not? Like there, there was something that stood out because you never know. I may be looking at one of those for other reasons, why I think it's a, he or she is attractive for, um, this community.
Ms. Young, that's what you're paying us to do. We're experts. But we do this. If we recommend four to six and we're willing to stand behind it, if any board member through the consensus of the whole board would like to bring forth another candidate, we think you should have that opportunity. And if you choose to do that, then we'll get you all the information. So we don't want to feel that we're so absolute that you might, uh, be at a point where we wouldn't be free to try to support you. Because all of this, we recommend, this is the board's decision. And so I want to assure you that you have that freedom. Now, here's something that we might mention. Maybe we don't feel that they meet the profile, and maybe we haven't been able to get into vetting them. Now, sometimes that can happen with an internal candidate. The way that happens with a internal candidate, because this is a confidential search, we are limited to how much we can talk and then give someone's name up. You might know someone more than we do. So I, I hope that you understand that the board is in control here. And we have had board members at a time, sometimes bring someone else in. If all of a sudden the board is, tells us even more about them, maybe we will consider the two-year after we know more from talking with you. So I want, um, I just want to tell you, uh, we want to assure you that that's part of the process.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, are we, okay, know where we are going forward. All right. We will be in touch, uh, probably Wednesday morning, probably not Tuesday night, after, um, the board meets and we will move forward.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Kuzner, I'm going to let you take the next one and, um, with our transportation update, and I will let you, um, set the stage.
First of all, I'm glad the survey was done before first days of school. Yeah, so there's no question, um, I'll, I'll talk more about the first two days of school because if we set the transportation aside, we've actually had an excellent first two days of school. But if your children are not getting on the bus on time or the bus is not coming to pick you up, it's not a pleasant experience. So we recognize that. Today was a, a, a much better day than yesterday, but again, we still have too many issues that need to be addressed, and each day we're going to address it. So tonight, um, and I do want to thank Kiva because I know he worked till almost midnight last night, and soon as he gets finished with tonight, he's going back, I don't know if he's going back to the office or going back to the computer. So Chris and Kiva, and I might add, but I see Chris is up there, so I guess he'll, you're going to lead it?
Yeah, I can start.
Yeah, fine.
Oh, so, uh, good evening, board members. Thank you, uh, you know, for the opportunity to, to share with not only the board, but also the community, um, a little bit of a, a review of our first two, um, days as far as it pertains to transportation, as well as some of the challenges, and then some of the potential solutions we've identified that, uh, we want to move forward with. Um, so some high-level things of our first two days and, and just how we, as we prepared for these opening of school. We had 26,000 students that we, um, scheduled, uh, for transportation to and from school. The 190 routes is actually a low number because it's 190 simultaneous routes at any time. We actually have hundreds more than that total when you include the to and from, middle and, and, um, and high school. But at any given time, we have to be, we have 190 routes going simultaneously at the school division. Well, we're seeing, observing many empty seats. So of those 26,000, we know they're not all riding the bus, but we had to assume that they were, uh, based on the information they provided to us. Some of the, this is going to come up in, in some of our challenges and concerns, and then how we're going to mitigate it going forward. But verifying students are on a correct bus, that is vital, and, and the safety and delivering these kids home safely is of utmost importance. So that, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I just want to make this point. Yesterday was day one, today's day two. Especially at the elementary level, but truly at every level, there's a greater level of care to make sure the right children are getting on the right bus. You're going to see in my report later, we have a lot more children in our school system than we had last year and the year prior, and many of those kids are new to Stafford County Public Schools. So just by the nature of the opening of school, things will go slower because we want to make sure children are at the right loc- at the ri- on the right bus. I think he has a, well, he's, it's the next one. And then we have the multiple, um, responsibility for contact tra- contact tracing and health mitigation strategies, which mean we're cleaning the buses in between routes, which also slows this down. It's not excuses, I'm just giving you the reality of what we have to do, and I'll let Chris continue.
No, that doesn't look good up there. So I'm going to quickly see if I can open up the PowerPoint version. I printed it to PDF just so that wouldn't happen. There we go. So real quick on day one, overall, our first shift elementary had, was pretty successful. Uh, we were able to pick them up and get them to school on time. What we ran into was in our second shift elementary and after. So we ran into our normal, um, issues with the first week of school across the division, uh, but there were some areas that were obviously, uh, ran into more significant issues. The double runs were needed at all levels, resulting in the late pickups and drop-offs. And a double run means we don't have enough drivers to do all 190 of those routes simultaneously. So a driver has to pick up one run, take them home or take them to school, and then return back to maybe the same neighborhood or, or, or street and pick up more kids and come back. That's the only way we can get from, do the driver shortage, which I'll share with you in a moment, to the 190 concurrent routes that we have. Our day one, unable to transfer our high school students, um, for their travel programs. Due to the lateness of our morning shifts getting in, by the time we would have gotten them to, uh, their travel school, they would have had to immediately return back. So, uh, there just was not the buses available. We improved on that in day two, still ran into some snags and, uh, they were late returning. Um, so we are continually improving. Up front, we need better communication. That's, if you take anything from this, that is our biggest, um, area of improvement. Tomorrow, we, we tried to improve today over yesterday, and I'm not talking about advanced communication, saying, hey, expect delays in routes. I'm talking about real-time communication of, your bus is running late. And I'm, I'm not going to make any excuses for that. We did a, a poor job in some areas with communication, and that, that will continue to improve. So some, we saw significant improvements in day two. Elementary school, we saw the most significant improvement, but we also had improvements in middle school and high school. Most principals reported 30 to 60-minute improvement from day one to day two. And that's a, a, a very rough number. Some were over 60 minutes, and that includes, hey, when did my last kid arrive in school? And when did we get them on the bus and out of the school at the end of the day? at the end of the day, from the day before? We improved communication, that real-time communication to elementary families. Wasn't perfect, really targeted the students that we knew were on those double runs. Mentioning that we need continued improvement for communication for our secondary families, our middle school and high school. What we did in day two is we already started to consolidate some of our routes at the secondary level. It is really hard to, in real-time, consolidate routes. We saw the most room for immediate improvement at the secondary level, specifically our high school. We know when a bus comes in and there's only five kids on it, that is not efficient use of our buses and it's taking up a route that we could easily take those five kids, move them to another bus. There's a long process, it's not something we can do overnight typically to consolidate routes. We have to identify which students aren't getting on the bus, which students we could take from another bus and move. So there is a process of the bus driver checking almost each route, each stop, who's getting on the bus and who's getting off so that we know who on that actual roster. It's not as easy just to say, I've got five kids on the bus, let me add 30 more. So we have to know which kids and then which kids still need transportation to make it more timely. Our challenges, lack of bus drivers. So currently, in order to make the 190 routes that we have running concurrently, we are 42 drivers short. And that is after we've taken 13 other staff member and assigned them to permanent routes currently. So that's office staff, that could be our lead bus drivers that are supposed to be providing guidance while our current drivers are out in the field. It could be other office staff, it's our substitutes that we have that are usually filling in when we have sick and call-outs, they're permanently assigned. So what that does is put us at risk when we have call-outs from our bus drivers. We already had some today. Then we're scrambling again because we don't have any substitutes, we're having to double up more runs. Other challenge, buses are unable to reach and depart the schools timely due to traffic. We know this area, there's traffic. We run into it every year, this year has been worse. And I'm not just talking about traffic getting down 610, down 17. It's getting in and out of the school most directly. We have very long car rider lines. A lot of that, I believe, too, is the COVID issue. It could be, I would say that some of it is in day two potentially because of the transportation struggles in day one. I'll admit that. But we had significant transportation in and out of the school on the first day of school. And a lot of that is parents like to drive their students the first day, I completely understand. A lot of that also could be due to COVID. Last year, we were able to social distance with one per seat and then as we got more kids in, we went to two per seat, trying to social distance as much as we can. But a lot of the parents may not be comfortable putting their child on a bus. Lack of response for our opt-out. We issued an opt-out for students for transportation late in the school year last year, early summer, as it might have ended up being. We did not get very many responses of people opting out. So, and one of our areas that we want to improve on is looking at an opt-in approach in the future and heard from a lot of principals that actually support that and want to do that now and reach out to families and get a very good response right there.
Let me just expand on that. You might recall that back in June, a very, an administration recommended to you to opt in, not opt out. Why? Because we learned over experience that between 16,000 to 18,000 students will actually take the bus. And as you saw, we planned for 26,000, because about 3,000 opted out. But then we have to assume that everybody wants the bus. So one of the reasons why a lot of our buses have empty seats is because we're driving around looking for children and they're not planning to take the bus because we know it's not going to be 26,000 out of 30,000 kids taking the bus. It'll be 16,000 to 17,000. So I just say this respectfully, the opt-in option makes the most sense because then we really know who's going to commit to the bus, take the bus, and we could plan accordingly. So that's, that's really a variable. And I just want to remind everyone about the June conversation.
So the last bullet on here is loading buses in a timely manner. And that gets back to our point of, we are very careful when we place kids on the bus. We want to make sure they are on the proper bus. That takes time. Not only unloading them in the mornings takes time, tagging them, making sure that we know which bus they're getting off of so they're on the right bus in the afternoon. So loading and unloading buses in a timely manner has been a challenge this year and we've made significant improvements today. We'll continue to make improvements tomorrow. And that's, not only, that's a team effort between the drivers and the school members because the drivers are checking rosters as kids getting on. As they become more familiar with which students are on their bus, that becomes a much more efficient process. So looking at some next steps and solutions. On the short term, I've already mentioned, the biggest area that we can improve is our communication to families and that's our real-time communication. Secondly, is our consolidation to eliminate our empty seats and create more efficient routes across the board. I already gave examples to that. We are looking at that every night, our route coordinators are reviewing that. Like I said, we can't make immediate changes, but we are looking at the most egregious methods of where we can consolidate those routes. The additional traffic control, we're exploring how we do that. So, and that's looking at directly, whether that's crossing guards, whether it's our security officers that are out at the, trying to navigate the car riders and our buses. Our buses are constantly getting stuck in the roads, unable to get to the parking lots to pick up or drop off kids because there's a huge car rider line. And we need to find a way to get those buses around those car rider lines more quickly.
Not that you have to do this, but I literally have spent the last two days, today I dehydrated, I believe, because I was out just watching buses and spent the last two and a half hours at Brookpoint. I've been at Park Ridge, I've been at Pool, I've been at North Stafford, I've been to others. My point is, I've watched at Park Ridge, a bus take 20 minutes to go 100 yards to get onto the property. Stafford Middle School, when you depart that entryway, you try to make a left turn, it is almost impossible. And we have cars and buses backed up, which means it's a ripple effect. And the other buses than the high school run. You get my point, Stafford Elementary School, you know your schools. Which ones work well? Gale works well, okay? Gale, it's separated, that works well. So it's not all. So I share that with you and I invite you, if you're looking, you know, to do something, to go to either the morning or afternoon and you'll get a better sense of what. Chris was at Kate Waller Barrett today, took a picture. He literally was a bus, he was behind a bus and the bus, I got criticized last week for taking off my mask. For the public, I have asthma and I have cancer and one of my issues is breathing. So if you have a problem with me taking off my mask when I talk, I apologize. But I'm going to breathe. So Chris was behind a bus on Kate Waller Barrett and that bus was crawling because the traffic pattern of cars coming out, buses coming in. And I bring it up not as an excuse, this is just a fact, okay? It's the way our parking lots have been configured. This is not new. This is not new, obviously. But as we get more and more children, which I'm going to show you a little later, it becomes greater of a concern. Go on, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, thank you. And I already mentioned the loading and unloading efficiency and getting better at that. Mid- and long-term solutions. And so some of these are closer to the midterm, one being our bus driver recruitment, that can be midterm and it's long-term. I say that because we know that we have 13 drivers currently in training. They will be in buses at the end of August. So we're still a couple of weeks away from them. That's one of the biggest classes we've had training in a long time, very promising. We have another 14 ready to start class, they're starting next week or very soon. So that doesn't eliminate all 42 drivers that you need, not to mention that we're using 13 in there. But we have, I think it's roughly 90 double runs across the division right now. So that starts to cut those down, which, when you start, cut down one double run at an elementary school, that has a significant impact on saving time because not only it puts them late for the elementary school, they're already late for the middle school and they're already late for the high school. So every additional driver we get, every additional route that we can cover and eliminate a double run makes a significant difference. We're working with HR, Keegan, myself, Patrick, on an interest survey. We've actually had paraprofessionals, coaches, reach out to us and say, hey, I'd love to drive in the morning, you know, pick up the kid, come in, get a bus, go pick up the students at Kate Waller Barrett and park the bus, go be a paraprofessional, maybe drive in the afternoon, maybe not. Maybe we have another driver come in the afternoon to drive that bus and take that same route home. That would be a significant impact. So we think we can get several drivers that way. Now, that's more of a midterm solution because they have to go through class. Working with Kiva's trainers and once we identify them, we're going to set up night classes, weekend classes so that we can get them in off contract hours, obviously, so we don't lose them in their current position. But it would be great to supplement our current driver pool with some additional support staff. Already mentioned the opt-in for student riders. That could be something we explore this year. It could be something that we're setting up for the future that we get ahead of it for next year. Like I already mentioned, we are looking at how we can consolidate, but we're using our real data now that we have kids on the bus. We can determine who's riding the bus and who's not. And so it's better for us to do that. If we do another opt-in survey to all students, we're then starting over with all of our routing because we could have a lot of changes in there. And so we're looking more at now, monitoring it ourselves and then using the opt-in in the future. Even before these first couple of days of school, been working with Mr. Baldwin and Dr. Kizner on the potential of adding an IT support staff that's dedicated to transportation. So we get, we have IT support for transportation, some of it's shared right now. We need direct help so we can constantly be working on, if we have routing issues with our software provider, making sure our communication, which is a glitch we ran into this week, making sure we have somebody that is on top of that at all times. So we're looking at a way to get that dedicated support staff to transportation. And I will leave it on this because this is some of the most important information about what our solutions are. I do believe that we are going to see continued improvement every day, just as we do in any beginning of the year. We know that this year was more challenging than previous years and we're completely willing to admit that. Just know that we've already seen considerable improvement in day two and fully believe we're going to see that in day three.
All right. Comments or questions from board members? But I want to ask Dr. Kizner, it sounds like there's a second piece to this or is this the presentation regarding transportation? Okay, I just, maybe I misunderstood, there was a part two. So Ms. Young has asked to go first, so I will start with her.
So Dr. Kizner, I was at Hampton Oaks. I was just going to pick up some lunch and I made a left and the next thing you know, I saw all of these cars. And so I drove around and the line was probably about a mile long for parents picking up their kids. And, you know, I asked some questions and, you know, I rolled up my sleeve and volunteered to help. What I found was that the community is eager to help. And I was looking at the solutions and next step and what I didn't see up there is I'm wondering if we, so the community is already bringing their kids to school and I was wondering if we could take advantage of that opportunity and ask those parents that are carpooling right now with some of, they're actually carpooling. Some of the parents are picking up their neighbor kids, kids that they actually know. And so, and maybe extend a gas voucher to these parents that are already helping because they're going the same way and they're taking some of the parents. And I wasn't sure if that was something that we could do for those parents that are already doing that and help alleviate some of the traffic off of the road. I don't expect every single parent to continue to take the kids. I wonder if we could take some cars off of the road and then those parents that are already bringing certain kids from the neighborhood to school. What do you think, Dr. Kizner?
First of all, I do want to thank a lot of parents because with very short notice, we have, in many ways, disrupted their schedule and asked them to take their kids to school. And if, it's kind of a mixed blessing, to be honest with you, to have parents drive their kids to school. We're going to have to build the trust to get the kids back on the bus. We recognize that. But if parents, I think you might be mentioning things like carpooling. So if you live in a neighborhood where parents know each other, I mean, I don't want to get into the carpooling business, but if parents are friends with other parents and their children know each other and they go to the same school, I mean, we do see that, you know, every once in a while. I saw that, you know, I think that would help. You know, also walking, you know, some schools are much more accommodating for walking. You know, so, you know, the weather, you know, the next couple of days, I think it's going to be pretty hot, especially in the afternoon. But, you know, our key is to get the transportation system correct. So parents taking their kids to school is their choice. It's not, because there is no other choice. And we're going to get to that point. It's, as I've been said on NBC News today and I'm saying to the public now, it's just not going to happen overnight. But it's going to get better like it, today, as Chris showed you, we shaved off 30 minutes to over an hour in many of our times and that will continue to improve.
Dr. Warner.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Kizner for all the effort they've put in to try to resolve these issues. I understand the first days have not gone as planned. I'm wondering if we need to start looking at some more long-term permanent solutions because clearly growth in traffic patterns are not going to change over the next few years, except to get worse. Are there ways that we can start working maybe with the county and VDOT and even looking at our own campuses to try to expand the lanes or access, maybe adding a second access? Because some of our schools are on one way in, one way out. And is there any way we can maybe get another entrance on some of them? Is there some way that we can start working with the county? Because certainly the county realizes that all these houses and developments that we have, we have to have access roads for the schools or that's the problem. And there's nothing more frustrating than sitting there and watching your, knowing your destination is in sight and you're sitting there for another 30 minutes trying to get to it. And I certainly, you know, realize that these are, this is a very long-term solution, much more than what you've put up there.
Yeah, I agree and we have talked about that. And I think there are some, you know, immediate solutions of trying to look at the car rider line. And we've been doing car rider lines for years, so they're usually pretty efficient. We've figured out the best way to route them and we've seen such an increase that it's gotten more difficult. But a lot of, we've already mentioned, you know, Kate Waller Barrett's the perfect example of it's tucked in and it's really one way in, one way out. And so when our buses get stuck, there is no way in. So there might not be a whole lot of improvement there, but maybe some road widening or some other areas of how we could get our buses in and given priority.
Some of the schools, Whitewater, Whitewater is an example, they opened the building earlier today so they could move the parent line faster. So whatever time we tell parents, the earliest you could drop off, we made it earlier today. And Karen Bingham said that helped. The other thing, I just don't want to harp on it, but we gave you the scenario of how many bus drivers were short. That excludes when people call in sick. So today we had, I don't know how many, but we had people calling sick. Yesterday, we actually had someone called in goodbye and that was Whitewater. So we had, you know, so we have to adjust even when we know we're already adjusted. I just also want to remind you, at the end of the 1920 school year before COVID came in, we were fully staffed. I think that needs to be remembered, that we were fully staffed. So these issues that we're discovering, not discovering, that we're recognizing, acknowledging, we did not face in the spring of '20 because we were fully staffed. And we hope to get to that point, but you know that what's going on with hiring bus drivers in many positions. So it's just, if you're wondering like, why now? Why didn't we have this two years ago? Because we did much, we were much more fortunate in our ability to track and retain drivers.
Just adding to the bus driver shortage, I had it on the slide, I didn't speak to it directly. We actually have, just from last week, over the weekend and yesterday, had six drivers resign. So six drivers that we were counting on and had routes for have resigned right before the school. So that obviously threw a hiccup. So that obviously threw a hiccup in our plans as well.
Sure. Ms. Hollerback.
Hi, Josh. Sorry. I actually have a, a couple of questions and maybe a couple of suggestions. The, the six bus drivers that decided they didn't want to be employed anymore with us, did, did they get a sign-on bonus? Did, did we pay them any, any monies to, to come work for us?
Not, not those six, I believe. Those were existing ones that were already contracted with us. It's really the ones we have in our classes now that are receiving the, the new sign-on bonus.
Okay. What, what are we up to with that now?
We're doing a thousand dollars, so it's, and Kiva, Mr. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 500 when you complete your training, and then 500 after you start your route and finish 30 days.
Okay, good. Did we reach out to the sheriff's office at all? They've helped us in the past when we've had traffic issues, whether it's for events or whatnot. Did, did anybody reach out to Sheriff Decatur and ask him for his help?
They're there.
So yes, we're still reaching out and, and trying to get more help and, and working with him on that. We've had some out at our schools, even, even in the last couple of days. Really, the deputies are, are out there for a safety, they're not out there directing traffic, though. And that's where, that's our responsibility to direct traffic and find someone to be a crossing guard or, or direct to traffic.
Right. I just think in an emergency situation like we had the past two days, I think Sheriff Decatur probably would have gladly helped us if we had asked him for traffic control assistance at some point, just a suggestion for next time.
Ms. Hollerback, I actually have that in my agenda for the first thing, to call Sheriff Decatur tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
To call Sheriff Decatur tomorrow.
Okay.
And have a conversation on how we could.
Awesome.
Coordinate our efforts.
Appreciate that. I got a, I received an email, I don't know if it was a constituent of mine or not, but the, the issue with the schools, the actual building themselves, parents were trying to call the school, and then when they weren't able to get through, saw them this morning, saw the administrators this morning, and they were told, A, that at a certain time, the telephones shut off, and they go to some kind of automated system. I think that's part of the communication problem. The other one was, I guess, Versatrans stopped working at a certain hour, five, I think it was five o'clock last night, it just, parents were looking for their kids, and Versatrans wasn't working anymore. So there was no information gotten by the school, transportation was too busy to answer the phones, there wasn't enough people to communicate with parents. So I, so I guess my, we've seen this before the first week of school, maybe perhaps next year, I won't be here, but here's a suggestion, put together, hire some temps, put together a, a phone bank at central office, put a phone bank together at transportation, and just have people there to answer the phones, so that parents can get some answer, information, or, hey, well, let me look into it, I'll call you back. Because that's where the frustration's coming from, not being able to communicate with anyone. And then the, some of the communications tools that we used, even for a snow day, last year, my, my son was in, senior, and we had a snow day, and I got a Facebook notification, Twitter notification, Instagram notification, email, it was on the website, it was, I mean, we overcommunicated. And as, as much as people maybe complained, oh, they woke up, woke us up at five o'clock in the morning, I can say that I appreciated the overcommunication to the parents, because I got a lot of people saying, thank you, you guys have improved so much, and we just didn't do it this time. So my recommendation is, is we have a bunch of tools in our communications toolbox, we really need to start using them. So, thank you.
Ms. Randall.
I would very much like to say thank you to all the drivers that came back today after a very long, hot, running day. Even with AC buses, you still have all the windows open, the top popped open, and it was an unexpected, very long day. So I would like to very much say thank you to our drivers who came back today, even to our staff that, you know, jumped outside to help with buses and car riders. I just want to say thank you. One of the things that, we've talked a, a bit about elementary school, and so I wanted to give a comment and a suggestion for that as well, is I was at Rocky Run this morning, and I've checked in with some other schools, too, but the car rider line, I think, because it's, again, the first couple of days, and it's stopping up the traffic for next year, maybe we need to make a PSA, it can be per school, per division, or whatever, on how to do car rider lines. Because I'm seeing cars come up, put it in park, parent gets out, comes around, unbuckles their little sweetie, lifts them up out of the car, puts their backpack on, hug and love, oh, wait, you forgot your snack, and that is taking a congested, long amount of time. And so if we could do something with kids, like the, the SEA at their schools, make a little video that shows how car rider line should be done, so that they do move a lot more effectively. That's just a thought. But shifting gears towards the high school, because I'm hearing a lot of middle school and high schools, for the exorbitant amount of times that they have waited, and buses have, in some neighborhoods, have not even come for the last two days. And I'm seeing nodding heads. And so that is a big concern to me, that we have kids that are feeling quite anxious about coming back in, because we had way more elementary kids than we did middle and high school kids in. So there's going to be a little bit more anxiety in, about coming back. But then to sit there and go, oh, my God, I, I'm supposed to be in first block. Oh, my gosh, I, I, you know, I'm a little worried about attendance and tardies, because we still have attendance and tardy policies. Are we relaxing them? Are we negating them? I would like to give us these kids some grace periods. Some are trying to earn their exemptions if we're doing all that again. But I'm a little worried when we talk about things like traveling kids, the stat kids that have to travel, and now they didn't make it to their school, and they sit, and they're not missing their necessary class at that school, they're also missing their math, their English, their science, they're, they're missing everything. And the other piece is that I just worry, you know, now, they didn't make it to their school, but today, they made it to their school, they didn't make it back to their home school, they're missing practices, they're missing jobs, they're missing appointments. I mean, we already moved the high school, you know, we all had a little bit of hesitancy with that, but you move the high school to the end of the day, and now you've extended this day until, in some cases, we're getting emails six o'clock. And, you know, like I said, these, we told, we backed the time up to 3:30 so we could be a little bit more thoughtful to the life of a high school kid after school, and they don't even have that. And, you know, I just, it's a lot of angst in the middle and high school situation in how long, if at all, they get picked up and/or dropped off.
Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I want to first say, welcome, Mr. Baldwin, to your first year at Stafford County Public Schools, and your first year running our routes. And it, it has been challenging, it is challenging. And I would like to echo other board members' comments about thanking drivers. I want to say that when I was visiting principals this summer, I heard the praises of route coordinators sung because of all the constant changing of routes that had to happen with COVID, and I assume this is continuing. And so, and, and just a, a plea to parents to please be kind to our bus drivers. They have a rough time of it, and we would really like to keep the bus drivers that we have. I, I want to say, mention something that, that Dr. Kizner has said many times, which is that we sometimes overpromise. And I wonder to what extent, you know, we as a board pushed for the schedule to be changed beyond what was initially brought to us, and asked that, that, that elementary schools start a little later, and that high school end a little earlier. And staff likes to please the board, and if maybe we inadvertently put a little pressure that, that perhaps exacerbated this problem. But I'm concerned, moving forward with the lack of, with the bus driver shortage, and let's remember with COVID, we could have bus drivers quarantining for a couple of weeks at a time, and that that could, could make it worse. And so I, you know, I understand you think it's going to get better each day, but just to ask that we think about whether, you know, maybe we need to go back to families and say, we're sorry, your, your pickup time is going to have to be this, your drop-off time is going to have to be different than what we originally said, and, and be more realistic about what that could be. And then again, I want to say that, reiterate what's been said about travel students who, you know, we, we need to make it a bit of a priority for those students to actually get to school. They can't be missing all instruction for the day. So, but again, I, I, and, and a lighter note, I asked my daughter, who was a Stafford student many years ago, and I can remember times in the first week of school where she got home two hours late, and I said, you remember that? What was that like? She said, no, I don't remember, I was probably reading a book. And so our students are, are often very resilient. So hopefully, hopefully that will be the case. Thank you.
Ms. Haley.
I have a question, and then comments. The improved communication to families, can you be more specific about that? What is the plan, and when will it start?
So it, it'll start tomorrow, but most directly, we, we have the access to send out direct notifications to an individual bus when we know that bus is going to be late. And so we need to do a better job of, one, testing it ahead of time, but two, making sure we get those messages out. So we improved upon that, but we still have some room to grow. And, and that's where tomorrow, we need to make sure all of our secondary families are getting those notifications. Typically, in a, in a, once all this is, is ironed out in a typical year, obviously, it's, it's a few buses here or there that are late because of traffic or some other concerns. And so right now, it's, you know, many of our buses are, are running late. And so we're, we're not trying to blast the entire division, but trying to identify the buses that are running late, and sending those direct notifications to those families.
Many years, I've been the person that have asked our community to give us a chance, bear with us, you know, give us, give us a week, give us a couple of weeks to get these things straight. That's when buses were, were late. I have never, never received reports like I've received. Now, I, you know, this is not personal against anybody, but clearly the system, we, we, Stafford County Public Schools, the school board, starting, you know, with us, have failed. So what are we going to do? I mean, we're going to tell people, oh, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll tell you now, the bus is going to be three hours late. I mean, I'm getting reports. Buses are not only three hours late or more, they're not showing up at all. You know, we've got kids sit at the bus stops that are there for hours, and it's hot, it's muggy, it's, it's hard, I, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but the system, the system has failed. And not that long ago, we had a report to this board that things are looking good. You know, we're doing test runs, we've got the drivers, we've got the schedules down, we're getting the people the information. I mean, this was such a shock to me to hear what's happening. And I am, somebody said, you should be ashamed. I am ashamed. I'm ashamed to be part of this. I'm very happy that we have a plan. But, you know, that plan's got to work. And you're saying you're rerouting buses, you're, you're changing because there's less kids on them. Well, just think, one of the reasons the kids might not be on them is because we're calling the parents. We're saying, please, pick up your kids, bring your kids to school. So we're, you know, we're creating part of this problem here with, with the car riders. We can't plan on a year with what we've got on the bus today. I'm sure many parents took off work today, and they changed their whole schedule, so they could personally make sure their child got to school. I mean, I, I asked for this, I, I know, you know, others, I had Ms. Hager on the phone first thing this morning, and said, we need a report, we need to, we need to find out what went wrong. And something went wrong between the time we last got a report and now, because, I mean, we know about the COVID, we know we have to clean, we know we're short on drivers. And, and I appreciate everything you do, and I, God bless our bus drivers, our tenants, everybody in transportation. I know they're working as hard as they can, but we're not, we're not giving them enough support. And if we have to spend more money, we've got it. We have the money. You, we, our budget was funded, we've got COVID money, surely some of this can be associated so we can use that. We have, you know, paraprofessionals, I remember many, many years ago, our paras were trained by the sheriff's office, they wore the, the sheriff's vest, and they were out there directing traffic. If we've got problems getting buses in and out, if, if we can't get, you know, the sheriff's deputies aren't available, and, and I agree with Ms. Hollerback, you know, Sheriff Decatur has always gone out of his way to help Stafford County Public Schools. And, you know, we need to start there, but then say, what can we do on a long-term basis? Short-term, I think we can, we can ask them, what can, what can we do to make this better? And I know, I've, I've been at schools where the car riders, it's nothing like what you, you know, describe, Ms. Randall's, the staff opens the other door, helps a child out, and that car is gone. I mean, it's, it's very efficient in some schools. But I've got reports, even today, that a bus didn't show up. No bus shows up. Now, how is that ever going to be acceptable? Ever? Parents aren't being informed, and, and I'm, I'm glad they are, and I'm, this, this is just very hard for me, because I've been the one for many, many years saying, please, give us a chance. We, you know, we, we have to work these, these issues out. But this is, this is not that situation. This is just a nightmare for everyone. And we need to know what has to be done to get this fixed. And if we can, can we contract bus drivers? I don't know. I don't know the answers, but there's employment agencies that, you know, have people available, and I understand we'd have to do background checks or whatever we do, you know, for employees. But in an emergency situation, you know, we have to be out there saying, what can we do? And, and our parent, it's, it's, it's just unacceptable. It's unacceptable, the burden we put on the families and, and the kids. The, the high schoolers, you know, that are sitting there twiddling their thumbs for hours because they're not in their special accelerated program, because they can't get to the school, well, are the classes going on for the other students, and these are just missing them? And, and then the little ones, you know, the first day of school, they can't go to school because the bus didn't come. Or a parent who, you know, is off at, at a job, you know, many miles away, that can't concentrate because they don't know what's happening with their kids. I, I just, I'm, I, I, I am, I'm, I'm ashamed, and, and I apologize. Not that that is going to help, but this is, this is just totally, totally wrong. And if we had any idea that this was coming, then I sure didn't get that memo. Because the memo I got was, we're under control, we're moving forward and moving along, and, and I never heard anything from the school system. I got my news from parents sending emails. I mean, I, certainly, whatever district they're in, they're all equally important. So we can't do anything fast enough for me to get this thing fixed. But communication, I'm glad you put that first, because there has been almost zero communication, or maybe zero accurate communication, from, with at least the parents that have written in, that I've seen. This is, this is a nightmare. This is, I, I'm, I'm sure, Mr. Fulmer, you're thinking, oh, my gosh, I should stick with finance? You know, now I've got the buses, and, you know, but it's, it's all of us, it's all of our responsibility.
So I, I do need to comment, and I, I'm not.
Okay, no, I just, I just want to, and I have no excuses. There is, in my mind, there is absolutely no excuse for our failure. The only thing we can do is to move forward as fast as we can to get this thing done.
Okay. And.
Go ahead.
I want to tie it back to your superintendent search, okay? And I want to tie a little bit to Dr. Chase's statement, and something that we tiptoe around. This is not to place blame, we're looking for solutions. But I do want to remind the board that your administration came to you with two recommendations that you chose not to follow. The schedule and the opt-in. The schedule and the opt-in. Trust me, because we've had a lot of meetings, this has adversely impacted, besides the 40-plus drivers that were short. So I agree, we want to fix this, we want to fix it yesterday. But as you move forward, you're going to have recommendations. And what I heard, and if we go back to the minutes in June, when we were saying, well, the constituents don't want to opt in, it's not fair to them, and I actually said the opposite. I said, it will be fair to them, because we won't have children waiting on the buses on the streets, because we'll know exactly who we need to pick up. So I say that respectfully, because we anticipated, I had a question today via the news, did you anticipate? We anticipated back in May and June, based on our recommendations, if you don't follow these recommendations, we're going to run into this problem. And so I say it not to place blame, I say it as a partnership with your next superintendent, that we want to work together, but if we're always going to be over rote ride in our recommendations, then we all have to take responsibility for the outcome.
Dr. Kizner, I like to make informed decisions, and we take it a recommendation, if you anticipated something like this, my question would be, why was that not brought forward? Now, I understand, you know, there's recommendations, you win some, you lose some, the board makes the ultimate decision. But we can only make decisions on the information that's available. And I don't recall any discussion about, this could have a horrendous effect. There, there, you could, your kids could be out there for hours or whatever. So, you know, to make a recommendation is one thing, but just give all the fact, not you, whoever's going to be sitting here, the board needs all the facts to make an informed decision. On the other hand, this opt-in, opt-out, if I opted out and then my child needed to ride a bus, where would I be? This school is obligated to provide transportation to the students. So there, I think there's other issues involved with that. As I said, I don't have an excuse, but to say, if you made a different decision, this, this wouldn't have happened, or this may not have happened, to me, we should know. We should know what is anticipated. And as of, what was it, last month? You know, we were told things are looking good. That's, that's what bothers me more than anything. If we had any idea, our public could have been informed, they could have been prepared. Our schools could have been ready for more bus riders, we could have sent an, an alert out, an SOS, please help us, parents, you know, can we, can you drive your kids to school? We could have had traffic control people out, we could have been prepared. But as, as I understand it, I mean, I'm assuming, given the benefit of the doubt, that nobody anticipated anything like this, because that would be just cruel to let this happen.
Madam Chair, I have a comment for Chris. So can we talk about just running through the next step and solution so to make sure that the parents know what to expect the next couple of days? Again, reiterating, thank you all for the work that you've done staying up late this week. Even when I was out this week and I overheard a parent looking for their child, the child happened to be 13 years old, I called Dr. Kizner, he answered right away, found the child, and in, in, in seven minutes, you know, the child was already home. So Ms. Hollerback asking a question about communication about in the future, I want to know what we're doing now in terms of opening up the phone, because when I did call Brook Point, it happened to be one of your children, the phone turned over. And so I, I couldn't help right then and there. I was wondering if we could do something about that now, that we're leaving the phone open and making sure that, I know we have a cell po, a cellphone policy, that the parent, the, the kids can call the parents at school, or whatever the case might be, in class or whatever, but we need to lax that a little bit so that, you know, the parents would know that their kids are safe. And the buses that are not showing, we, we need to do, that's something that I'm concerned about. When I'm hearing kids walking on Courthouse Road to school, I'm concerned that that's a, something could happen. So we need to make sure that these kids are safe, right? So we need to let the parents know, Dr. Kizner can make a statement, of course, what we are going to do the next couple of days, things are going to get better, I know that. And, you know, I apologize to every single parent out there, because I know your heart is racing when you call me or send me an email personally. I talked to a couple of you all today, I saw the phone number in the email, and I talked to them, and so they're very grateful. These are good parents, caring about their children. So we just need to make sure that, I know our first priority, we're trying to do, is keep them safe. We have a lot of new students, and I know that they didn't have a bus. So they're new to our system, and we're making sure that they're safe by making sure that they have a bus on day one. So I just want the parents to know that we are caring for their kids, but give them the next steps, let's round out, make sure that we're not bickering back and forth, but we're actually letting them know what we're planning on doing for the next couple of days. Do you mind just going through that again and then finalizing that?
Yeah, sure. So already, already detailed the direct communication, realizing that we, we have heard that as well, that not everybody has been able to get through, whether that was for transportation. I can assure you, the transportation lines have been open, we're not intentionally sending anybody to voicemail. We've had six or seven people here in the central office building taking phone calls in addition to who is at transportation and at the schools. I, I have heard where our phone lines have gotten overloaded and they automatically go to voicemail. So we're looking into that and, and trying to find additional staff. We have the staff, but we'll place them in the appropriate place so they can receive those phone calls. Part of the issue with that is, when they answer the phone calls, we want to be able to provide answers. And so they need to have access to the system, we need to be trained on what, what to actually do in those situations. And sometimes the schools are the best place, sometimes transportation is the best place to get those answers. And then following up on the, the next steps, as, as you requested, Ms. Young, is the biggest thing is, is becoming more efficient with our routes. We have too many buses that have very small ridership numbers, and we've got to consolidate those, and that opens up that bus for another run, and it eliminates those double runs. And then the traffic control is key so that we can get buses in and out of, of the building. And getting them, once they're loaded, or once they're at the, at the school, we have to get them out of the school as quickly as possible. And so that honestly just comes with time. We always have a lag there every year of learning which students get on which bus, making sure that that little kindergartner is getting on the right bus. So there are lots of checks and balances there before they go on the bus, and the bus driver checks. So every day that gets quicker, and, and that's where I said, we saw, already saw considerable improvement in that today, but we have more improvement to make.
Okay.
Ms. Hollerback?
Is it possible? I, I mentioned this to Fab very briefly, and I talked to Ms. Randall the, the other day. What we learned about some of the bus drivers that left last week, they live in Spotsylvania, and they, their children, it, it wasn't worth it for them. And one of the things that you have gotten emails from non-licensed staff is the ability to have their children in our schools. And if we're going to pull out all stops to keep drivers, you know, we're going to bring it to the governance committee, or the Fab committee, or the committee, or the whole board, that policy, I just want you to know, that's something that we've recognized, we, we've identified as maybe an incentive to get drivers to, who live outside the county, to come work for us. So I just want you to know, we, we, we picked up from a couple of those that left, that it just wasn't worth for them to have their children in one school system and then work at another school system. So I just wanted to talk a little bit--
We were planning on putting on the agenda, Dr. Kizner.
Ms. Hollerback.
I just have one more, I guess, question, and I don't know, of course, is this, if this is in your wheelhouse, but right before redistricting and when we see communities that are being approved by the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission, there's usually a discussion that goes along with it about reexamining some of our, the walking zones? Do we need to maybe put that on, on our, on our plate for, you know, the next coming months to reevaluate where we're at? I got a, I got an email today from someone saying that they, they're one, they're one street away from their school, I didn't say what school it was, but that they've had the same bus driver for many years, and they've never had any issues up until this year. So my question is, is if they're one street away from the school, why are they taking the bus?
Can I, Ms. Hollerback, we put that on the three-on-three for discussion with the Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, we have not had, those meetings have been canceled twice now, but it is on the agenda to discuss with them, increasing the number of walking zones.
Well, that's good to know, but I, but I think just from, from a school board perspective, that's, that's more a, a school board discussion to be had. Walking zones are specifically in, in our arena.
It's because in some, some schools, we would need to have sidewalks added, and so the question is, can the Board of Supervisors help us with that?
Right, but I think it would be worth it to actually bring, have the board have a discussion about it and maybe a work session about it, so that you have facts to bring to the Board of Supervisors to say, these are the areas that we could, you know, minimize buses in if we could put sidewalks in to have children, maybe more children walking. So I just wanted to throw that out there for a conversation piece next time.
I, I actually agree with you. It's something that we need to look at again, because it was looked at several years ago on identifying those safe walking zones. I coincidentally was, was speaking to a family yesterday, unrelated to walking zones, but trying to resolve a transportation issue, and I noticed, I just happened to be at that school earlier that, that morning, and, and noticed based on, from the discussion with the parents where they lived, that there was what seemed to be a very safe, a walking path, a sidewalk all the way down. And, and so I asked them, and they've actually said, we would love to be able to have a walking zone. And so those are the areas that I, I discussed with them, and I'm, I'm going to circle back with Greg Martin and, and see what the next steps are of doing an analysis of this neighborhood and other neighborhoods to see if we can't add additional walking zones.
Great, thank you.
And we can, we can do that on our own. For Park Ridge and Kate Waller-Bowright, I remember specifically, we as a school system had paid to install sidewalks, in both those cases, we worked with the HOAs, we had to get, you know, land, you know, dedicated for those sidewalks. But it's something that we can do as a school system, we don't have to, you know, go to the Board of Supervisors for that. I think that's an excellent suggestion.
All right, I haven't had my, oh, opportunity. I mean, I want to echo, you know, certainly what everybody has said, and as I talk to parents and stuff, I mean, the only thing I felt that we could say was, this, we failed, we need your help, we need the great people that we have in our system to work together to solve a problem. That's what we do in education. From my perspective in the Hartwood District, certainly no, I read everybody's, that's not what I'm saying, but it did seem in our area, we had extreme amount of problems. No buses, no opportunity to walk to high school, I can tell you, from Stafford Lakes to Colonial Forge, to the end of where the Folkeer County line is, to walk to Mountain View. It's just not even possible. I, I would like to have those areas looked at, especially because it did seem like there was the highest number of the ones I was reading. Now, perhaps they were targeted, but I have to say, it seemed like those outer reach areas were really the problematic ones. Now, I understand as we get behind, I don't know if it's something we need to look at as a board for, that we may not always order the huge buses. Maybe we need some smaller buses. I know that sounds counterintuitive, however, it just seems like to have the routes that we have, people choose to live where they do. So I'm not trying to make, I know where people live in my district are very far out, I think Ms. Warner has, Dr. Warner also has people. So that is a choice. But can we come up with ways to perhaps pool the outer reaches so we are not cascading when something goes wrong? Just something for us to think of, I think, as a board, and I will certainly look forward to information from, you know, the experts. But I do think we have to look at that. I really hope that we get that, not just the communication, but having those buses there. On a second note, though, a parent who I saw today said, my bus has worked perfectly, another individual in the Hartwood District. But her comment to me, which was heartbreaking, was she said, a parent came up to the driver of her bus that had done a great job, had been on time, and almost stormed on the bus, was screaming at the bus driver, take my child, I know they're not supposed to be on your bus. And she said her child was like, wow, what happened? So I just invite, I know that we are all frustrated, I know we're hot, I know we are tired, but we are all being watched, and we want to, to do the best thing. We have great bus drivers, I need to keep them, we need to keep them, and we need to recruit for them. So as you think about posting on, on social media and saying everything you can say about, I'm here, I'm elected, I, I will take it, does it hurt? Yeah, but I will take it. But remember, this is a person driving your child. Their job is to drive a bus safely. I can speak for the roads in Hartwood, that isn't an easy job when I don't have 20 to 50 people behind me. And when you ask and you say about a CDL license, let's just be honest, if you had a CDL license right now, you could drive for Amazon, and you could drive packages, and guess what? Packages don't say anything. And it's going to be, they may make a lot more. So I understand the frustration, and I do apologize to those that happened, but please let's not lose the community greatness that we have. It was discussed in the report tonight, whether you agreed with all of it, we like our schools, we love our schools. Actually, I think they're the strongest communities we have. This is difficult, it's the most difficult one I've been, I've had on nine years. Please know, we are going to move through it. We will reexamine stuff. Ms. Healy, on the May 11th meeting, when I went back and looked through those comments about our start to school, you had asked at the time, we reevaluate the start times as we go through the year, because we were promised that, that we were doing some of these things to help transportation. I understand we have other decisions as well, but we do need to analyze, and we will, and I want parents to be involved in that. However, going forward tonight is focused on where can we improve? We have talked about that, we are moving forward. I would just ask, I hate to say it, because I am usual, I am very much a big picture, but Hartwood District, we were missing buses a ton there. I know that's a hotspot. However, we can meet that, please, please, let me know, let us know, how can we do that? Because students being there alone as the weeks go on is going to be a major problem. If we need to hire out emergency, let us know. We will meet next Tuesday. Now, we have several topics. If there is some recommendation that the board you need approval for, bring it next Tuesday, because this board will approve it, I imagine, I mean, as long as you have the money, but I think we do, to fix this, because this is the most important thing, is getting our children to school. We want them there five days a week, we want them there. But I do have to say, remember, we are all a community. Many of these bus drivers live and play and work in this community. Please don't scare them off, they are doing an amazing job, and I want to thank them, because we're trying to recruit more. So please, please. I got two compliments in emails, in the midst of an email that was very frustrated, they were a frustrated parent, and at the end, they ended up saying, but I would like to compliment, I would like to compliment Kim in finance for taking my call and taking that time. So even in the midst of the frustration, you could still put a silver lining. So thanks to that parent, because it made me happy, that yes, we didn't lose our humanity in this. We are going to try and fix it. If there is something we can do by next Tuesday, we will approve it, and we'll move forward.
Chairwoman Hazard, I know you mentioned Hartwood a couple of times, that some buses was missing. I, I don't live on Anvil Road, but Anvil is not here, probably, somebody didn't mention Anvil. Buses didn't come to Anvil Road over by CVS, and I'm hoping that you all are looking at that, to make sure that a bus do pick up those kids. You may not have an email, you may not have a call, but I'm letting you know that someone told me while I was getting something to eat. Anvil needs to be looked at, not just Hartwood. Nothing against Hartwood, but Anvil is an area that they need to be picked up. Thank you.
Ms. Randall, we're next.
So in the solutions, I guess I'm a little concerned with still, what are some of the things that we are willing or going to try to do differently for the students that we're transferring for, like the STAT programs or IB or whatever? transferring for like the STAT programs or IB or whatever other programs when we're moving the high school kids? You know, there's word about what they're eating, but also, you know, getting those kids back to their base school, but you're running the other runs, so they're stuck there. I'm just curious, like, is there something that's going to possibly be done differently in the next week or thoughts of for that situation that seems to be not going well?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Baldwin to come up real quick because I know he, we were discussing it today, already working on a solution to address some of those immediate problems now that we've seen where the direct issues are with those travel students and where we potentially could shift some routes. So I'm going to let him respond to that.
And thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for coming back to us today.
No problem, no problem at all. Good evening, upon your chair, Board members. To address your question, Ms. Randall, what we're doing is looking at what routes are finishing, and that's where looking at the attendance and size of it, where we can minimize and provide a driver designated for our travel students. So starting tomorrow, we'll be able to look at some of our governor's schools, students getting back to their school. In addition, with those travel students, the midday, we should be okay. But some of those kids are coming back before we start our afternoon, which is the elementary. That's where we use the bulk of our drivers. So we're trying to minimize that and look at the area where they may begin their elementary school and get some of those drivers to go pick up those kids from school and drop them off at their base school near the elementary. So we can do that very easily. And then after that, it's just optimizing, being able to take a load, maybe combine it with another load to free up that driver that we can designate to take our travel students to their schools. So that is something that will be coming, and hopefully we'll have a better solution by the end of the week.
And we should be starting, well, probably not until September, but I'm assuming then we'll have a lot, we'll be able to transport kids to their sporting competitions? Because, I mean, that's kind of running late right now, but I'm just worried about moving those kids too.
So that's Friday, because I'm here and we have a bunch of scrimmages. Football season is around the corner. So looking at the times that the schools request to be transported, we may run into a little difficulty. But here, again, we can optimize with the high school ones because there are less kids. So that gives an opportunity to combine buses or routes onto, one, to free up drivers, two, take our athletics to their respective locations.
I apologize, to be honest. We're sharing with you that we're short 40, 45 bus drivers. We're also sharing with you that 12 of those bus drivers are people that work in his office, why the phones are not being picked up, are substitute drivers. And we're also sharing with you that on any given day, we could have drivers call in sick. We need to be honest with the community, that everything that we have done in the past may not happen right away and may not happen for a long time. Because that's just going to frustrate people more. We are working to get people into the classrooms so they could have their instruction, and many of these other activities, yes, we all want it. There's nothing that people are asking that we don't want. But I don't want to lead this community, mislead this community to say, "We're giving you all this information, and now we're going to just go back to normal." It's not going to happen. I'm just going to be the one to tell you, it's not going to happen. We're working on it. He needs to get out of here so he can work on it, okay? We're working on it. And I just ask all of you, this is just the second day of school, okay? Today, a lot of the stories that you guys told were yesterday's story, okay? So I'm just asking you to, I'm not even asking you to be patient, okay? Because I don't, if you know me, you know I don't have a lot of patience, okay? But I'm pretty pragmatic of the situation that we're under, okay? And all, this is not surprising to anybody that we've been short bus drivers. We've been talking about it for a heck of a long time. There's not a meeting, hasn't gone by that this hasn't been brought up. So to anybody to say, "Wow, I just found out we're short bus drivers," I'm sorry, that's not accurate, okay? And we're open to solutions. Some of you have raised solutions. We will continue it. Thursday, we have FAB, which is on the agenda. Salaries do count, incentives count, a lot of things count. That's why I brought up that policy. That was something years ago, prior to my time here, that you were looking for teachers. We need to look at our drivers and other positions the same way. So I say it respectfully because I'm hearing all these requests, but I want to bring us back to the presentation. We have a real challenge right now. I'll use the word problem, I try to avoid that word, but we have a real problem, and we just need to be honest with people. We want to get the elementary kids in, we want them in instruction, we want the middle school kids in, the high school. And he's trying his best for these, the travel students. I mean, I was at Brookpoint, I know we had a lot of Mountain View travel kids waiting to get back to Mountain View. Our drivers have been great, but I do want to make another group of people, the administration, the building administration. Because I've watched upset parents today go up to principals, and I really respected how our principals are very good listeners, understand where the parents are coming from. Because, again, all of us up here are parents, so it's not like we don't understand the parent perspective, okay? But I just ask you, you know, all your things that you're asking, just to please also tell the public that it's going to take time for this to happen, okay? Otherwise, we would have fixed it yesterday. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? I will make one because I didn't get as many. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for coming tonight. Thank you for coming here. I know this is difficult, and I know this is hard. I know you know that this is the future. I think what the Board is saying is, we are open to solutions. We are open to funding them. But we're also open to analyzing what went wrong, what things can be done, training, other things. We all can look at that, and I think that's healthy. I don't think us not examining things, I think that makes it, then we're not being honest with ourselves, our decisions and other decisions. I think that's something honest and should be done. We want it to get better. You want it to get better.
Absolutely.
And we want to support you and the staff in those ways. We understand that communication is key for our parents. I think a lot of communication has been done even tonight, highlighting the issues that are going on. And they're not unique to Stafford. However, when I tell a parent that, they don't care how it is in Nebraska. They only care how it is in Stafford.
That's right, that's right.
So we want to be the most competitive and the place that most bus drivers would want to work. And so I give you-
I do appreciate the welcome and accolades for our drivers because they do work very hard. I've had a chance to be out there and just see them in action, and they do do a good job. I'm going to commit to you to make sure that we do the very best job because making sure our kids are safe and getting to school timely is the most important factor. And making sure that we do not pass up anyone that we have and that we visit to every stop, I will make sure that we improve on that. That's something that is just the fundamental purpose of what we do. So we will make sure we work with that, and if there are any concerns, we make sure we will address them formally and with our recommendations. And just know that we are working. Our folks are doing a great job handling and stepping up to the challenge and filling in where there's a need to do to help get our kids home safely and soundly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our citizen comments. I will get us started tonight. You didn't have anything else?
Yeah, I'm just taking this off.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. All of a sudden, I didn't want to make sure I missed anything. So three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. You're encouraged to provide a copy of your comments to the Board Clerk, who is sitting down to my right. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if you represent an organization. If you can announce the purpose or topic of your comment, there will be, the stoplight system up here, green will be when you get started, yellow will come on when there is one minute remaining, when there is, when the red dot or the red goes on. Please stop speaking and provide your comments. The Chair reserves the right to restrict total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the Chair. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals designed to register complaints against Division employees or Division programs, services, or activities, excuse me, may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113. One thing to remember about student comment, I mean, public comment, is it is comment. There is not an opportunity to dialogue with the Board members if you ask questions. Those are things that we will be taking notes on, but it is not a dialogue between us and the members of the public. I have six people signed up initially to get started. What I will ask is if your name is called, go ahead and stand off to the side so you can quickly move forward when a prior speaker is finished. Then there'll be an invitation for anyone else who may wish to speak. All right, I'm going to start with Mary Radzowitz, okay, if I mix this up. Philip Stevenson, Cassandra Corcoran, Dillard Wentz, Michael Wood, and Emily Powers. And you all can just choose your order, just come on up, come on down.
Okay, well, thank you. My name is Philip Stevenson. I'm in the Hartwood District. One thing I do want to point out, too, last week, you created a policy here that while on campus, all persons, and I just went through the policy, will be wearing a mask for speaking. And you didn't do justice to someone like Mr. Kendra, who has a disease for a medical opt-out policy. I've not seen that come out yet. You have till the 21st of September on that. With someone like Mr. Kendra, a cancer survivor, asthma, you didn't give him the opportunity to opt out. But you allowed other members here to speak without a mask on. So I want to point out that, for record, you violated your own policy tonight that you put out there last week. As for transportation, many, if not all of you, have received an email from myself last night. I did receive a note back from a Board member, but there's some things that still were out of line with transportation. One, communication sucked. 10,000 different ways you guys can communicate. Transportation has their own Twitter account. Even when school days happen, Mr. Kendra's account is the first account they even posted. Why is that? Why does the Board have a problem communicating? Why does the school have a problem communicating with parents? Subbuses, if those happen, we're lucky to find out if a new bus number comes out. So that parent may be tracking a sub bus, or maybe tracking their original bus, who's now in Garrisonville District or somewhere deeper in Hartwood. Those things aren't coming out to parents fast enough. Some things that are really poor, that we're not taking into consideration, Mr. Baldwin, I hope you consider next week, those students, the buses were coming. They're coming two hours late. So by the time I picked up 10 students in the neighborhood, three runs to different schools, the buses were still coming through. So I don't want to say that the buses weren't coming, they were just coming late, and there's no communication that they're even there. So hopefully, a parent got to see that bus and come through. So that's something to consider. Next week, while you're rerouting and doing all of those things, consider that the parents that took their kids in this week because the buses showed out, those buses aren't going to be empty. They're going to be like they were every year. They're going to be four to a chair, or three to a chair, or even sitting in the aisle like they have in the past. And the bus drivers are a lot because they have to make it in. Down in the Hartwood District, we have a huge problem with drivers speeding because they're trying to get them to all the different schools and get those districts, those routings properly. So we have an issue with that, too. Through the neighborhoods, 25 miles an hour, you're going to take out kids. It's only a matter of time before it happens. It's happened before. And on top of that, the parents who are discouraged because the bus is late, they're racing around the buses and creating more issues. I apologize, there's so much more I have here to say, and I will put it in an email and put out to the Clerk. But my time is up, and I hope other parents share that concern, that transportation is a real issue. And just to say we're going to fix it, a committee or something needs to be put together to take this longer and give us a plan.
Come on down.
Thank you for being here this evening. My son is one of the unfortunate ones that does not have a bus to ride to school. He waited yesterday for two hours at his bus stop, only to call me and say, "I need you to take me to school now." I get assurance from his school that he will have a bus to ride home. He doesn't. He was told he doesn't have a bus. I have to go pick him up. No problem, he'll have a bus tomorrow. He doesn't have a bus. Thank goodness, my high schooler's bus picked him up today, finished her route, and then took him to his middle school. Thank goodness for her, he got to school today. Then in the afternoon, he was told he has a bus, waiting at school an hour. Got an email from the school, "I have to go pick him up. There's no bus route, there's no bus driver for him." So now my option is, I have to leave work to go take him to school and back home. I don't know how many jobs will let you just leave, take your kid to school, come back, and then leave early to go take him home. I'm missing pay for this. My son's frustrated. He has not been to his first period this year. And I know it's the second day, and I know buses are going to be late. I'm understanding with that. He has no bus, no bus at all. And I do know that there are a lot of bus drivers out there doing multiple routes all morning and all afternoon. They are not getting a break, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. And I know we have a short-term plan and a long-term plan, but what's being done right now? Who is going to get my son to school tomorrow, the next day? This is completely unacceptable. It's not that they're late, there's no bus, no bus at all. It's really, really frustrating. I do want to thank you guys all for your efforts in all of this. It's just beyond frustrating as a parent, and my kids are frustrated, too. It's absolutely ridiculous. I want to say thank you for all your efforts and your help.
Hey there, I am Cassandra Corcoran. I talked to several of you, got emails back and forth. Thank you very much for the communication. I appreciate the individual communication I've had. However, I wanted to read what the delay afternoon bus arrival email was for me today. Now, I have graduated one, yay. I have two more in at two different schools. I get a warm email that simply says, "This afternoon, your student's bus route will be covered by another bus. The bus may arrive past scheduled time. Please use MyStop app to recalculate arrival times." I don't know what bus, I don't know what kid, I have no idea how late. I go to-
Just address, just address the Board.
I go to the MyStop app, I put the information in, it gives me for both kids, the original bus stuff, and says it's on time, which is not right. So that's number one. In communication, you can send an email, but that does not qualify as communication. I understand the difficulties of this, I understand frustrations. I know there's a million things going on in the background that we as parents don't know about. I appreciate all of that. But what I can tell you is, I live on Cranston Lane, which I believe is in Hartwood, sorry, we're new, to that address. And we did not have buses two mornings in a row. I work from home, my window faces the street, it's a dead end, I notice every car that comes by. No bus. After an hour, my child, my oldest, that will be leaving soon to go to college, took the boys to school, all right? She sees kids coming from the Colonial Forge area neighborhoods, walking up Courthouse Road, middle schoolers. There's no sidewalk, there's not even a shoulder because Stafford is crazy pants. And these middle schoolers are walking on Courthouse Road to get to Rodney Thompson. This is unacceptable. Today, I went to go- Today I went to go pick up my child from Rodney because he'd been there an hour, no bus is home, not for my high schooler, not for my middle schooler, and there's a parent there asking if she can have her child be a walker. She lives in the Augustine, right? It's just across Courthouse Road, there's a sidewalk to the light, you cross the light, you go over. They say, "No, that is not a walking zone because of the cross to Courthouse Road." That is unacceptable. If you guys are looking at walking zones, please, God, do, and please look at that. When we first moved here, we moved literally across the street from Park Ridge Elementary School. We were encouraged to have my child take the bus to go literally across the street because they didn't want people walking from our direction to the thing. These are things that need to be looked at. Thank you, and I just really want to know if we're gonna have a bus tomorrow.
I'm a little short for this. My name is Delara Wentz, I'm a new resident of Stafford County. I'm a military spouse, a parent to a first grader at Park Ridge Elementary. I'm also a local real estate agent, and I just wanted to bring it to the Board today that I feel like there's a huge lack of communication with the Stafford Board when it comes to approving new residential, just homes. So, there's a thousand units that are approved now for the east side of Stafford, correct? Yeah? Thousand units, and we're having an issue with buses already. There's also at least four hundred more homes being built in Embry Mill. There's also D.R. Horton, who's building houses on Courthouse Road, as well as Dree's Homes, there's new townhomes going off of Route One. There's also another subdivision going in with Atlantic Builders, I believe in the Hartwood District. There's a lot of residential being built over the course of the next two at least years off of Courthouse Road, Mine Road, off of the Mountain View area, and I will let you know that my student's classroom is full. I can't even request a teacher transfer right now. He should not be in the classroom that he's in right now because I did not get a great impression with his first grade teacher, and I should have been able to make him go into another classroom. I wanted to also bring it to the Board's attention that there are ten other builders that are building in the Stafford County area. There are also ninety-five apartments planned for the Embry Mill area as well, where Publix is. So my question to you all is, with, there are classes already being over the amount of kids that can be in one school, one being at a hundred and twelve percent already over the next three years, when these new residential homes go in, what's the plan? I feel like Stafford County does not talk to you all. A thousand units and we can't even get our kids on a bus? I feel like it's completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michael Wood, and first and foremost, I do want to say thank you to the bus drivers. I unfortunately got to meet one very well yesterday. What I want to talk about is accountability. We haven't addressed this, right? We're talking about a shortage of buses. Your system is broken. I heard earlier someone say it's vital to deliver kids home safely. I wouldn't agree more. Greater level of care, making sure our kids are on the right bus. That was in your brief.
Please address the Board.
Excuse me?
Just address the Board, please.
Those were things that were brought up earlier. The school, first and foremost, the school, Park Ridge couldn't even give me a bus number at open house, couldn't give me a bus number the Friday before school started. How am I supposed to know where my kid is? Still, to this day, I don't have a bus number. Transportation Office, I'm gonna get to the story with my daughter, my fourth grader. Transportation Office yesterday couldn't give me a bus number. I called the school again because my daughter wasn't at the bus stop like she was supposed to be, dropped off. The school told me to call them. The Transportation Office told me to call the school. That's when they did answer. My child is not a pawn. It is your responsibility to tell me where that child is, when they are in your care. Finally, yesterday, her bus stop, 2:39 was the drop off. I understand it's the first day of school, I did, I gave a little bit of wiggle room. However, my daughter never made it to her bus stop. The bus driver literally got out of the bus trying to help me locate my daughter by a walkie-talkie. Nobody could find her. You know who found her? My neighbor. After 5:30 PM. Accountability, we need to address that, not just the number of buses. My daughter will continue, just like she was today. I took off work early to be an early release student every single day. I picked her up today at one o'clock at Park Ridge. She will continue to be that, so I can avoid this. This is just, this is just a bunch of, "Oh, we need to look at this, we need to look at that." It's a bigger issue. The accountability of our own children. Last, I want to, I want to end with something that's unrelated to the buses, but I just, it caught, caught my attention. While you guys were sitting there talking about looking for the, searching for a superintendent for the school district, and I was searching for my child, the people have spoken, they said that earlier, they don't want politics in the choice of the next superintendent. Well, I ask you to go look at those thirteen bullets again, where the leadership profile has numerous bullets listed as a political skill, and politically savvy. Take the politics out of this trash.
All right, I still have, I think, Dillard Wentz, I don't, okay, if there is anybody else who wants to come speak, go ahead and stand off to the sides if you don't mind, and then just individually come forward. After you have spoken, there is a clipboard to my left, it would be to your right if you would go ahead and sign in. So come on down.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Noel, and I am a sophomore at Mountain View High School. And let me just say that this is absurd. So, waiting to go home yesterday and today, we were standing out there two to three hours, ninety-degree heat plus humidity made that today a hundred degrees. We have no water, we have no shade, we can't go inside and just sit in the EAC, in the cafeteria at least, while they call out our buses. My biology teacher told me the latest the bus came to pick up students to go home was 6:10 and 5 o'clock. So, the communication with the app they told us to also download to track our buses, that's not helpful either, because we don't know if it's there. We just log in, it says, "Hey, it's arrived on time." My mother got an email saying there was a change in the buses to where I was going to have to be on a substitute bus. Didn't give me the number, I checked, it told us to download the app and check it. Checked the app, says it was gonna be, I was gonna be home on time by around four. I had no idea if that bus left without me. I didn't get on it, so I'm sitting there, two of my neighbors are there as well, we're sitting there twiddling our thumbs, wondering if it's there or not. Did it already leave? What else are we supposed to do? I had to hitch a ride from my friend to go home, an hour after school ended. My other friend walked home, he didn't even make it halfway because it's so humid and hot outside, he has to call his mother to go home. This is insane. That's, that's really all I have to say. Thanks.
I'm a graduate of North Stafford High School, I went to A.G. Wright and Garrisonville Elementary School. I'm also the father of two students in the Hartwood District. Over the years growing up here, I've made a lot of friends, and lost a lot of friends thanks to the military, from all over the world, Okinawa, Japan, Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Oceanside, California. For the last forty years here in Stafford, it has always been growing. Surprise, we got a bus problem. It's always been changing, and it will continue to change, but one thing is certain, diversity is not new to this community. I make this point because any change in philosophy or curriculum that implies that this community is not diverse is simply just a wrong assumption. As we look to continually improve our schools, we also need not to change things that aren't broken. This community has been diverse in thought, in background, and diverse in culture. And I say that with emphasis that diversity is not necessarily based on skin color or race. You know that, I know that, because you taught me that. I listened tonight to this bus fiasco. My suggestion? Offer health insurance to bus drivers. You'll have a line out the door. Easy problem, plenty of retirees probably looking for health insurance. It all relates to this Board not listening. You all cause a lot of your own problems. You didn't listen when they didn't want to change a school schedule. Look what we have. You didn't listen last week when every parent that stood up here wanted a choice for masks. It's time for our elected officials to start listening to what we want, and what we do and ask, and not what the, and do what their superintendent recommends, and do what the consulting companies you hire tell you to do. Again, you cause all your own problems. You don't have to issue mandates, you don't have to follow the same policies that are created in communities because you didn't want, you want to be more like Northern Virginia. We live down here in Commute North because we don't want to be associated with the mess that those communities have created. Start making decisions, start being accountable for your role as elected officials. Stop analyzing and trying to one-up everybody. We'll listen to your stories up here. Stop the lane, plan ahead, and by all means, let the people who voted you in that seat help you by doing what we ask you to do. Thank you.
Good evening, Cormie Larson, I have a son at Drew Middle School. We have a bus assigned to us, but I've never seen it. Yesterday, he didn't get home until 6:30, it was because a random bus decided to give him a ride all by himself. He got a ride by just one bus driver, it was amazing. A few things that could maybe help open the schools earlier, so that parents can actually drop them off earlier. Maybe, you know, open that cafeteria at seven in the morning so we can actually get him into school. That is a, you know, that's your answer for all those cars backed up, school buses not being able to get in. I mean, my whole road, my whole road, Potomacron Road, they broke down today, the whole road just drove all their kids to school. So you have to start thinking about, this is an emergency, you're in an emergency situation, and you have to think about how you're gonna handle that in an emergency. Also, when you're talking about communication, all the kids have cell phones. My kid can't call me, he couldn't call me at all, he couldn't message me, he couldn't let me know what was happening. You need to open up and allow those kids to call their parents, that will help them. I mean, those are two simple answers that will, could make a huge difference in this problem you have because you don't have bus drivers, you don't have other things, so you have to, you have to be creative in how you're gonna fix this. That's all I have.
Hi, my name is Susanna Schneider, I have two boys that go to Mountain View High School. Their bus never showed up, we live 1.8 miles away on Vista Woods Road. The bus never, I can see the bus stop, luckily I work from home, and I can see the bus stop behind me, and they stood out there for an hour this morning. At 9:40, school started at 9:20, I had to leave my job and go take them and get them over to school. The first day, it took over an hour to get 1.8 miles from our house to Mountain View High School, and then for me to even get back home after getting out of there was another half an hour to forty-five minutes. And now I'm missing an hour and a half, two hours of work. The second, second day, I don't know why you thought it was better today, because it wasn't. They sat out there this morning for an hour and a half, when I finally got done with my meeting, I was able to take them to school. When they, I got the text message at 2:07 PM, their bus has changed. How am I supposed to let them know that now? And it didn't tell me what bus number, it was changing too. How am I supposed to tell them what bus to get on? It was ridic, they sat out there for an hour and a half today, their bus never showed up. My husband had to go pick them up, hundred and four degree weather out there, outside, and they've been sent out there for almost two hours. It's completely unacceptable. We have had our kids in five different school systems in two states, and this has never happened this badly. You said that you knew for months you guys had a bus driver shortage. Why didn't you take care of this in the summer or after school? Why didn't you delay the opening of school for two weeks while you can get bus drivers in here to get these kids? They're being left out at bus stops for hours and in places that are not safe. They're gonna get hit, they're gonna get run over, trying to get from the end of our neighborhood over to Mountain View High School, you gotta walk across Mountain View Road. And luckily, we did have the sheriff there the first day that I was coming to pick them up, Monday afternoon. The sheriff was out there, somebody in a police officer's uniform was out there directing traffic on Mountain View Road. So, that was good, but it still took almost an hour to get from my house to the school. It just, I, I don't, I don't understand what happened, I don't know where the disconnect is with all this. If you guys knew you were forty-two bus drivers down, why didn't you take care of it before school started? Or delay the opening of school till you had enough bus drivers? It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Fix it. I don't want to have to leave work again tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon to pick them up or take them. Fix it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Isaiah Escobal, I'm from Embry Mills, and the big topic tonight is transportation, so I'll touch on that real quick. I think it's totally unacceptable what happened, and apparently, it seems like the scheduling was the biggest issue with the changing of the school hours added to the big problem. Second thing about the kids being over two hours late and two hours coming home, so was that four hours minimum that they're missing throughout their day between school and their off time for homework or anything like that, is they're promised breakfast, and they get to school, and the schools aren't allowing them to eat. So now these kids that depend on this, and some of the families their food, now they're not eating. Why is that? Earlier this year, when we were doing hybrid, the school bus, it made it pretty close to when school started, but they allowed them to go to the cafeteria, get their food, bring it to class. Why has that ended? Let's see. I think that the students should be able to eat their food with their class, I think the communication needs to increase significantly, and having the students out without talking to their parents is unacceptable. But I think that's pretty much all I have to say about the transportation. I appreciate your time, thanks.
Yep, I was gonna just say, can you come back and sign in for anybody who's already spoken, I'm not sure I was, no, no, go ahead and speak first and then sign in, that'll keep everybody moving.
Sorry, thank you. My name is Marcia Whaley, and I live in the Wide Water District, and I just want to offer just a thought of a suggestion, just living on the last speaker that was up, maybe it might help transportation, maybe not, then maybe go back to having high school start first, and then middle, and then go back to elementary, with elementary having all the different dope double routes and things that they have to do, and they get behind, then to trickle down affect the middle, and then trickle down affect the high school. That's it, and I do also want to say thank you to your time up here, and also thank you to the bus drivers, I know they're working really hard. Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Amanda Grace, and I have two children at Wide Water Elementary. I just wanted to offer some, some advice. I have been assisting Ms. Karen Bingham, our principal, with transportation for the last two days, with band, bus banding, and making sure the students get in the correct cars and on the right buses. We have very minimal mishaps at Wide Water. My current, my background was in the military, I was in the Marine Corps. I was in the Marine Corps, was motor transportation. I think something that you could do is reach out to those of us that are, there are so many of us, inactive and active military servicemen and women, who could offer advice that would may aid in providing some ideas for how to better handle transportation, whether it's routes or how to move cars a little bit faster. I've seen ways which we can even move it even faster at Wide Water. But our system that we have at Wide Water is working. So I feel that we could, if all of us collectively start working together and maybe reach out to some of us parents who are in and out of the schools, being that I'm the PTO president there, I'm at the school a lot. I see things, I can offer advice, I can help, and there are many of us out here that can do that. So I feel that someone brought up earlier that spoke in putting together a committee, maybe having a committee of parents from the various locations of elementary, high school, and middle schools would be an optimal sense in order to create a better sense of what's going on because we may see things that you're not seeing it from and vice versa. So we can collectively come together to resolve this issue. And I think it would resolve itself more expeditiously if we had more outward input from the people that are there every day and experiencing it and seeing it. There are things that we can do to help one another as a community. So I appreciate everything that transportation has done. I know it's no easy feat. I did it for four and a half years. It's not an easy feat when you're trying to get things from point A to point B and mayhem collects its way. But in the military, we always have Plan B. And I think Plan B was kind of missing from this element. And I think we can create a Plan A, Plan B, and a fallback plan, Plan C, if we work together as a community. I appreciate your time.
Don't forget to sign in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Fisher. I have two children in Garrisonville District. Regarding the late school start times for high school, I think it's not just a bus problem. My son drives himself to high school, but his 10-minute drive normally this year is 45 minutes to an hour because the cars and the buses can't move on the streets near the middle schools. Because even without this, even, you know, just regular years, the middle school drive-off line goes out into the street and the cars can't move. So now with the times so close together, the high school students can't get to school no matter which way they're going. And so my son would rather go to school at 7:00 AM like all the other years in the past. So he, instead of spending his morning in traffic, he can get home after school, after marching band practice before 6:00 PM. I also have comments regarding the mask mandate. You have failed the children and parents of Stafford County with your mask policy. You have heard from numerous parents that do not want their child in a mask in school. You have received numerous correspondents informing you that you are in violation of federal law and violation of our constitutional rights. You are picking and choosing which laws you want to point to to justify doing what you personally want to impose on our children. You are hanging your hat on one uncodified Virginia statute with multiple conflicting interpretations. Our constitution has a supremacy clause which says federal law supersedes state laws and mandates and CDC recommendations. Your mandate violates federal law, our constitutional rights, a codified Virginia law, as well as your own Stafford County Public School Code of Conduct for students. You do not have immunity from lawsuits for violating federal law or the constitution, and I have had enough. Thank you.
Thank you for signing in.
My name's Joshua Bichico. I wasn't prepared to come here tonight. 10 minutes ago, I was at my house, and I just figured I had to come. Y'all want to make excuses for all of this. You've had three months to prepare. Y'all say that you were prepared for 26,000 students to be going to school on the first day. If that's the case, none of this would have happened. I think the decision of having elementary school kids go at the end after middle, or elementary school go at the beginning was just a huge mistake on your part. We have the most amount of our kids, our elementary kids. I don't know why we're talking about hiring bus drivers right now. Why was this not talked about three months ago? Y'all got my email last night. No one responded. I, I've, I've sent 20 emails to all of y'all without a response at all, and I think that's ridiculous. The last thing I want to say is about a mask. Mr. Kizner, you said earlier today when I was listening at home that you're dealing with cancer and asthma. And you said pretty much you're going to take down your mask and we just got to deal with it because you got to breathe. Well, what about our kids? Can we take out, can they take down their masks? Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in, sir.
Hi. My name's Truwal. I've got two high schoolers that go to Colonial Forge High School. So I really don't have a lot to say, but my biggest things are, is that I know that there was a comment earlier about that driving our kids to school isn't a choice that we, or is, is a choice that we don't have to do it. But some of us, like, we're essential personnel, so we have to go to work. Because like, a lot of us work in the city, so we're making long commutes there and back. So it's the, it's our decision, either we're going to let our kids sit at the bus stop for hours and hope that they get a bus and, and go to work, or don't go to work or go to work late and take them to school, if that makes sense. So I mean, it's a parent sacrifice, I know everybody understands. But the biggest, so another thing is that I don't think there's any clarification, or maybe just not for me. Maybe some people have the clarification is the tardies. I know it was addressed earlier, the tardies and classes, how the classes are being ran while there's no, while most of the kids are still trying to get to school. So with my kids being in high school, that's what they're, that's what they're freaking out about. You know, and with my daughter being a senior, if she's not getting the stuff or she's failing tests, you know, what's the repercussions down the road? And I kind of feel bad for them because, I mean, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and it's, it's, it's just frustrating. And then I know that it was addressed about food. So I know that my kids go out there to wait for the bus, and they're waiting forever, so they can't just come back home and grab something to eat, just to go back to the bus stop whenever they're running late. So hopefully, that'll be addressed as well so that the kids can make sure they're getting fed. And for me, one of my biggest concerns is leaving the kids at the bus stop for a long time. I know that there's a problems with the transportation, but it's just me as a parent, I get, I get nervous. I get nervous for my kids, and they're in high school, but then I see a whole bunch of elementary kids just standing there by themselves. I didn't know if there was something that maybe could be discussed with the sheriff's department that maybe they could have more people out, kind of doing rotations through the neighborhoods? You know, that maybe kind of give the parents some more ease? That, you know, that at least something's being hap, something's being done so that there's some kind of overwatch. Because really, when I leave for work at, you know, 4:30 in the morning, my kids are at the mercy of whatever, you know? And I know that there's a lot of parents like that, you know? I don't know, it's really only things that I really wanted to address, but thank you.
Thank you. You can sign in.
Good evening. I'm Maya Guy, and I live in the Acquia District. It's late, and I'll try to make a quick thank you, guys, for all your hard work. I know it's not easy reading the crap that we say about you. Well, not we, I don't say it. But you know what I'm saying. I know, I know it's not easy, and I know it's frustrating, but, you know, someone's got to do it. I think, and I appreciate your posture of, you know, look, we screwed this up, but this isn't great. Like, I do, I love that, you know, just seeing you guys be candid. But I, I would love the posture also to be, to us parents, and I guess I'm saying it because people are watching, we get what we pay for. And we're getting what we pay for. We needed to be advocating at the Board of Supervisors for fully funding the school board. And also, when the school board does get underfunded, 5 million here, 10 million here, 7 million here, about maybe 80 million for the past decade, I imagine we could have better facilities, better paid staff, and more buses, buses with ACs. We could have windows that open in some of the classrooms. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we have to deal with that we might not have to had we gotten money years ago. But also, I think it's time you guys start maybe being a little bit more creative and thinking outside the box and get committees of individuals who I know exist, who will advocate consistently if you guys lead us. And I just, I just think that there's something there that we can be doing differently than you guys just sitting here talking and talking about policy, and it's a little bit confusing, but y'all still aren't getting funded, right? So we could work better if you communicated with us and maybe had a liaison or something. Y'all all have my number, like, I'm willing to help too, but let's, let's figure out how to get us fully funded because I think if we had more money, I mean, $17 an hour, that's like $34,000 a year. What we're seeing is people are essential. That's chump change. So we need to do better. Thank you.
Make sure you sign in. All right. Anybody else who wishes to address the board? Okay. I don't see anybody running forward. So, all right. Then I will close citizen comment, and we will move on to our board committee reports. Dr. Warner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The budget calendar is up for action tonight, I think, or information. I just want to point out a couple of changes. We are having the work session on the 17th, and then it sounds like we want to have a meeting afterwards to approve the recommended superintendent profile. So could, would 6:30 be an acceptable time to start that? On?
6:30?
The 17th. Okay. So that will be one, so we will firm that up on the calendar. And the other thing is, is that we have called a special meeting for the 21st of September, which is also when we plan to meet with the PTOs and PTAs. If it would be acceptable to the board, I would like to move that to the 23rd, which is Thursday. And that would be available virtually, so it wouldn't be something that people would have to attend, if that's acceptable. So those would be the only changes to the budget calendar, just to reflect changes that we have addressed in the board.
Are there any, any questions about?
Any questions or?
What was the second change?
That, that's the PTO, PTSA meeting you're moving?
Yes. Yeah. September, September 23rd. So we would be adding a September 23rd. We would be moving the meeting with the PTOs and PTAs from the 21st to the 23rd in order to give them adequate time to express their concerns to us regarding budget matters. The Fab will be meeting this, this, this Thursday. And there are several things on the agenda specifically. We will be addressing the bus drivers, the training, the retention, and recruitment because we've known this has been a problem. We've been working on it. This is something that we have had on the Fab agenda several times. We've got it on the agenda again. The other thing that is on the agenda for this Thursday is Policy 2105, which is the policy that was referenced about the transfer status for out, for non-licensed staff. So we will be discussing those things. It doesn't solve our immediate problem, and for that, I think we all feel the same anger and shame because it is on us. However, the only thing we can do is start looking for solutions. And I think that one of the things that, that we can do is, is try to find ways to be creative, recruit our, our bus drivers, and try to keep the ones that we have. We can't afford to lose them, especially when it takes us so long to train them. So, so those things will be addressed on Thursday at the Fab. If there are any questions about the calendar, I will address them when we get to them. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Any other board committee reports? All right. Hearing none. Board member comments? Anyone wishing to make board member comments? I'm going to actually take volunteers or anyone? Any comments? Defer? Okay. Dr. Chase? Ms. Young?
I'm not going to defer. I, I just wanted to comment on the mitigation strategies. I'm not sure that parents or the emails that I've been receiving think that they're clear. So one of the examples was given to me, or I'm sure you all seen the emails that I forward to y'all as a team, was around, and I think Dr. Kizner mentioned it, was about, around the, the outside bars, how they were going to clean them, but also on the inside, what we were doing to clean the tables and the chairs and things of that nature because we said they're going to be clean in the classes and in the bathrooms and in the halls. But some of the parents want to know how it's done. And then the other concern that was raised is, and I brought it up on several occasions, that we need to have a plan, a mitigation plan for quarantining if we have a breakout in a classroom. And so I, I just need to know that we have that covered. I know virtual is not what we want, but we have, we need to have a plan. We talked about, you know, transportation and buses and having a B plan and a C plan, but I, I would like to know that we have a backup plan if the Delta variants comes to us. I didn't intend on talking about the virus, but, you know, you cannot be oblivious of watching TV or the news and know that that's what's on. So we just need to have a plan because our numbers are not great here. Yeah. So, and the other thing I mentioned was the, the masks. As I walk some of the, you know, watch some of the kids, and the mask is sliding down, and they have all kinds of different masks, and Hampton Oaks had such cute little masks for the little kids that fit nicely, and they were kind of light. And I was wondering if we could invest in that for all the schools, to have that for the elementary school because they fit nicely just to have those. And they will have a change. I mean, they could still, you know, go back home with their own mask, but it would be nice if they have those masks, all of them look the same, they're all light, and they were, visibly, you could talk very light through it. So I think that would be something that we need to look at. And I know, like I said earlier, I'm very sorry to all the parents that had to go through, you know, the anxiety yesterday and today. I hope it gets better. We take responsibility. We're working hard, thinking outside the box. I'm one of those that think outside the box. So the community is reaching out to us about writing out kids or, you know, carpooling or whatever ideas they have. I don't know if it's time for a committee or not, but I second that, to work on something. We could work together. I'm always willing to work with the community. So that's all I had. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I had a disturbing thing that I learned today that happened to a teacher that was working the car rider line where a parent was obviously very frustrated and called the teacher a fat cow as she drove, and other things as she drove away. And I just want to remind our parents, as frustrated as you are, please direct that frustration at us and not our drivers, not our teachers, and not our administrators. They're really doing the best they can. It's hot outside. They are staying outside. They are with the kids. They are with, they're there. They're putting in the hours, they're putting in the work. But please do not address poorly. Kids are listening, kids are watching, and that isn't something that we want. Like I said, it's a, it's a tough start this year. I feel terrible for how kids are feeling, how parents are feeling, how staff are feeling. You know, Mr. Baldwin has the weight of an entire, as a new division employee, has the weight of our division on his shoulders. And late nights, early mornings, and I'm sure every dream- sure every dream is going through in his mind everything that he still could do better and is trying to do better. So, I just want to remind you, the kids are watching, and I really, really, I just adored walking into the classrooms and seeing full classes of kids and their morning meetings and inviting us in to come and participate. Don't you want to be in our morning meeting? It was just adorable, I loved it. So, welcome back, really, welcome back, everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Healy.
I'm gonna limit my comments because it's late, but I, I do want to, to note that it was brought to my attention today that our superintendent had been invited to a board of supervisors' meeting or, to discuss the critical race theory, and he's not gonna be available, which I understand perfectly, but I was advised and that the reason that we're not sending a designee to that meeting, and that was the supervisors' meeting next week, was because the chair and vice chair had said that the school board had to be briefed first and that that would take place on August twenty-fourth. So, my, my question is, since this invitation had been rendered earlier this summer, apparently the date has changed, why would we not accommodate a request from the supervisors and, you know, schedule, schedule briefing for us in advance? And, and be able to send a designee there? I mean, we, we talk a lot about improving the relationships and reaching out and, you know, they're canceling this or we're canceling that or, or whatever, but it, it seems that that's something that we need to work on. And also, as, as a board member, it's unfortunate that, you know, I would hear about this from, you know, someone on the board of supervisors as opposed to from my own board. So, I know we've got so many problems right now, but, but, you know, this, to me, this is, this is important, that we, number one, communicate among ourselves, and two, you know, reach out, you know, to try to work with the supervisors. This, this was an opportunity, and, you know, it may be an opportunity missed. I don't know what the briefing is gonna be for us, but I think everybody here knows, I'm usually, send me the memo, I'd rather have the memo than have a briefing. The transportation update was the first time I ever asked for a briefing, you know, rather than a memo. So, I, I just want to note my frustration with that in terms of communicating, and, and I, I don't know if it's true or not, but that's what is being put forth, that our chair and vice chair, you know, communicated this to the, you know, to the county. So, if that's not true, then that, that could be set forth, but it, but if that's not true, then why would we not send someone to respond to that invitation?
Any other board comments?
I'm sorry, I know I said I was gonna defer, but I do want to send a shout-out to, I know several principals have made adjustments because of the transportation problems. Mr. Underhill at Shirley Heim made sure to communicate parent, with parents in real time that buses were delayed, students were still at school, he had activities planned for them today, so if buses were late, he was already set for them. I know at Wide Water Elementary School, Ms. Bingham had, parents were allowed to drop their students off a little bit earlier, so I know that many of our administrators are working very hard to, to help us deal with these, these problems, and we are working to try to get them done, but I want to shout, I want to give a thank you to those administrators who have, have adjusted to make, make sure that communication is going on and to try to help us get through this early stage.
Excellent, all right, I will make some of my comments first, and then I'll address the issue Ms. Healy has raised. First, I would like to say, again, a shout-out to everybody, but most of you know how I feel about that, and, but I think the one thing we can never get away from, I'm gonna be the same person I say every week about growth. We are growing and we have no support to get new buildings. We, neighborhood schools would certainly help us a lot with busing because we could get a little closer. My students that live out in Hartwood, as I said, you've got a long walk to get to Mountain View or to Colonial Forge High School. Even when, a long time ago, when you used to take your bike and go millions of miles, this would still be a pretty far, far piece. We need to work on neighborhood schools, that will help us on many, many levels. It also takes us to class size, we haven't gotten there yet, but we will, and we're gonna be close, we're gonna be in tight quarters, we're gonna have large classrooms, we're gonna have them in our main classes, and we're going to have them, and we may not be able to offer other classes. I know we do everything we can, but sometimes, yes, there are things we can learn from COVID and we can do some things virtually, but we are a large school district and we are growing. So, with that, I just would like to say, please don't lose sight in the midst of all of this, that part of our issue is we are growing. We've heard many people saying, well, what were you doing about the bus drivers? We asked at every meeting. If you go back to the May eleventh meeting, you will hear what they were doing, and that the state didn't particularly help us because they didn't open DMV to allow us to train drivers. Mr. Suddeth at that time said usually at that time of year, he was in the midst of training about twenty, and he had trained four because he couldn't get into DMV. So, again, I raise that with my state, I don't remember it being in the new budget request that they opened DMV for us to get bus drivers. I will keep reiterating, but any, any additional help would be certainly appreciated. Also, another unfunded mandate from the, that came down to us on Thursday afternoon is the contact tracing. It's going to be full contact tracing, and that has been now put onto our nurses. I can tell you, this board has fought tirelessly to have a registered nurse in every building. I can tell you, it's not for them to sit there and paint the walls. They have many kids with lots of issues, and they need to be available, not on the phone. I would like to compliment Dr. Kizner, because unfortunately, he received my phone call when I talked to my nurses. I, I couldn't even speak, I was so angry. It's probably one of the times that, and I will say, he and the staff are responsive to say, this is COVID money, we will try, we will hire contact tracers, because our nurses cannot have the added duty to be there. I, I worked part-time in special ed, I won't even go there, let's just say, our nurses are there for a reason. So, I would like to thank the staff for fielding my hysterical, I will, I will, I will own it, call, because at least I know at one of my elementary schools, that nurse was on the playground and saved a child's life. That's where they need to be. Not that being on the phone isn't important, but this is not, and that is an unfunded mandate. My biggest fear is this will open up the, oh, let's see what else school nurses can do for us. That is my bigger long-term fear, so for my colleagues, I will not be here after January first. That is my fear, is now we have this great open way for our nurses, that is not what they need to be doing. So, sorry, that was my big soapbox, because poor Dr. Kizner had to get that phone call. And I do thank you for reacting to, and for all the staff to, to help us accomplish that. With regard to the invitation for Dr. Kizner, he has been asked, I believe, several times and canceled from the board of supervisors' meeting to come and speak on the topic of critical race theory. When it was approached to Ms. Randall and myself, we were talking about it with Dr. Kizner, I know he's unable to make that particular meeting. In the past, our board has usually been briefed on any large topics that have gone to the board of supervisors. We have tried to always have the information to us first. Ms. Randall and I felt that we were going to bring that onto the twenty-fourth agenda as tonight's agenda did not seem like, well, we were hoping it was a quick meeting, but it has not, that we would be briefing our board or having something from staff on that topic to clarify any misunderstandings or ask and allow to have questions on the August twenty-fourth. The board of supervisors has asked that he come on the seventeenth, we felt that, that we should delay until our board had had that time. So, in full disclosure, that was the discussion that we had, it was not being hidden from anybody, but that has been our usual procedure. So, I know that Dr. Kizner is not available that evening, we would have to task another staff member to attend any of the, that meeting, and we have a lot on our plate, but, so, I will certainly defer to the board of what decision you all would make, be made. We felt that it was in the protection of not only just Dr. Kizner and our staff, but also just making sure that the board felt informed on that particular topic. That was the thinking, whether correct or not, that was the thinking at the time. And Ms. Randall, if I've misstated, please let me know.
No, I don't think you've misstated. It was the intention for him to deliver a conversation with us at the last board meeting, and, and he wanted to be the one to do it. I, it was a request that I had asked him to do, and so, I feel still it's our business from our employee first, and then I have no problem with the board of supervisors, if they would like to be invited, they could come or they could watch, and if they feel like they still have comments or questions, I don't mind, you know, I don't mind accommodating that after we have our briefing for our public first.
Thoughts? I don't. That's it? Oh, is that it? All right, is everyone, our majority comfortable with that we will make that invitation available and in a, at a future date, so?
If you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hazard, are you saying that we are not going to, at some point in the future, agree to an invitation from the supervisors to have our superintendent or designee go to a meeting?
Yeah.
Because that, that's what, I mean, it's one thing, of course, we don't even have to invite them to watch, you know, it's a free, free show, you know, for whoever tunes in. I think my concern was more hearing this from the other board, not knowing anything about it, when traditionally, I mean, I respect, you know, our chair and vice chair, but traditionally, when some, you know, potentially, I'll, I'll just say, significant issue comes before the chair, who, you know, that, that there is some informal contact with the board members or gathering of a consensus, so, I didn't know if maybe I was just left off the list, but it, it sounds like there was no list, so, I, I would just.
It was just actually an ask that I had to, I, I asked him if he would make the comment during his superintendent comment, if he could clarify things before, because I've seen in other boards where things had kind of escalated, and I just said, could you address it for our public where Stafford is? And that's how the conversation, I just said, can you do it under comments? But he wasn't here, so, that's why he got the leave.
Okay, well, it's, it's just, I, you know, there's a lot of communication issues, this is just one that I would see, is, is another potential one, and this, this is among us, and, you know, you're the chair and you can communicate, but it's nice if, if I know what the communications are going forward, that if someone is speaking for the, for the board. So, that, you know, that, that's one, and two, I have heard, if I've heard it once, I've heard it a hundred times, that we need to have a better relationship with the board, and a lot of times, it's, it's finger pointing, you know, they're canceling this, we're not doing that, back and forth, back and forth, and when we have an opportunity to have those communications, you know, I would encourage us to take, to take advantage of them, generally, so I'm just gonna leave it at that, but I, I do think it's important that, that we know, you know, as board members, what is being communicated on, on behalf of the board and, and hear it from our chair, or if you want to delegate to the vice chair, rather than hear it from our counterparts across the street.
Comment?
Sure.
I, I don't even know where to start with this, but I will just make it short. I'm not sure what we're talking about here, right?
You were out of the room.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm out of the room, but what I'm saying is not because I'm out of the room, I don't know what we're talking about, but I'm not sure why we're having this discussion. It is not a significant issue, like you mentioned it. We should not do political business as a board. When I heard this comment today, I'm appalled that we're taking time to sit here and discuss this. I am not going to discuss something that we're not doing in a, in a school system and wanting to address it in the board. I, I don't understand this. Why did, why is it even coming up? And why are we even, like, what is this back and forth? I mean, is there money they're trying to give us to, to learn about it?
I can't answer that. My, my question is more of an internal communication on, on the board.
Well, even, even that, if I could just finish, Ms. Healy, because I, I didn't interrupt you.
You asked a question, I'm sorry, I tried to answer.
So, all, all I'm saying is that, when you addressed it to me today, I, I was just concerned that, it feels like I hear things after the fact, after it happened, and, and so, when, when you come to me, I don't want it to be after the fact, I want it to be before it even occurs, if we're planning on doing something, because this is a board. We're a board together, we're making decisions and policies together, not after the fact.
Just one final comment. I know that Dr. Kizner has been asked several times and has been canceled at the board of supervisors for him to come. I would prefer all superintendents, all of us always operate differently, that invitations from the board of supervisors would come to the board in some manner. We have had lots of, COVID has not helped with communication in general, even though everybody says we have phones. We are all trying to maneuver and provide the best information at all times. I also would just take note of the particular request for the timing on the second week of, well, the second week of school. I also believe part of the job of the leadership is to protect our staff's time at a critical juncture when other things are going on. That's all I'm gonna say on that matter. Dr. Kizner?
Maybe because I'm a grandfather, I feel like I could give some grandfather advice, okay? And maybe because I only have twenty-one more days, I feel more bold to say it. I agree that the school board, board of supervisor relationship can improve, that's probably true in every community across this country, it's not unique to Stafford. You have a structure called this three-on-three that really needs some, some rethinking, okay? Because you, by me going and not going is not going to improve the relationship, that, well, it's just not. Just so you know, in July, I was planning to go. They canceled my presentation, just so you know. It's not like I've been avoiding this. I was planning to go, it was scheduled, they canceled, they had some other business they had to deal with. But I'm just suggesting to you that, I'm, I'm a big believer that the only behavior we could change is our own, and I would just ask you to think about that. But more importantly, I know transportation, we discussed it enough, but the last two days, I've been in a lot of classrooms, like some of you, and watching the children with the adults, from the custodians to the secretaries to the bus drivers, cafeteria and teachers, have been very powerful. And for some kids, they have not been in school since March of, I'm getting all the years mixed, March of twenty. It's been a long time. And yesterday, I don't know if you follow me on, on Twitter, if you don't, you should, I need, I'm trying to get up to four thousand people. I want, I want, four million away from Britney Spears, or not Britney, Taylor Swift, but my point is, like, my pictures were kids hugging teachers, okay? Parents hugging teachers, and people just hugging each other, so it was very beautiful. What I provided you is the enrolled students, okay, not the attendance, I will talk about it. This is yesterday, okay? So, what I want to show you, and I, Lionel's somewhere in the room, I think, hey, Lionel?
Hi, Lionel.
It just shows you how good he is, but you see the enrolled students and the projected students, and then you see the percentage, okay? And the bottom line is that, you know, give or take two or three percentage points, our enrolled and projected is, is pretty strong, and if you just look at, at the aggregate, you see again, kindergarten, I could tell you right now, the last, a day or two, we've registered more children, this is. This is, this will be, this is probably already 100%, but you get an idea. I do want to let you know, though, the attendance, so these are the kids that actually showed up, okay? So yesterday, this is yesterday, I don't have today. So yesterday, we had 28,000, this is not including preschool. We had 28,526 K-12 students. Now, why that is significant, we rebounded completely from COVID, okay? Remember, there's a lot of conversation, kids are leaving, they'll never come back? Well, some of those kids may not have come back, but a lot of other kids came and joined us. So there are 288 more students in, I'm using 2019, yes, last year would not be, you know. There's 288 more students in attendance for the first day of school this year than back in 2019. So not only did we rebound from COVID, we actually exceed. Now, I will just say a little, you know, for many, I think all of you noticed, the first 10 days of school, if children don't show up, they get dropped from the rolls. That's, you know, state law. So there could be a kid that moved to Prince William, to Idaho, to Paducah, Kentucky, who knows? And if they didn't ask for their records, they're still on our rolls. At the same time, there could be kids that are moving in, okay? We are, as you probably have figured out, we might be the earliest school that opened up in this region. So there might be, we know there's children registering. We got that Ferry Farm parent last week, yesterday, a kindergarten child that I know from talking, Winding Creek registered like five or six. So I just know there's more kids. But my point really being is, even if no one ever showed up, we already are at the pre-COVID levels and we're actually exceeded that. So again, September 30th is the trigger date. You have to give it a couple of weeks to get that data clean. The state kind of verifies it. So at your end of October, your second October meeting, we will present you, not, they will present you, you know, a real attendance and average daily membership and all that. But anyway, I think that's interesting. I also want to let you know that we have about, so these kids that I'm sharing with you are in the enrollment. We're still trying to verify if they're in the attendance or not, okay? But we have 706 students. It breaks down to about 176 elementary students and 530 middle and high school students that parents have chosen virtual for their child. And that's the elementary children, you know, K-12, Inc., the middle and high school children are virtual Virginia. I will tell you, and I'm not relitigating this, when you made the decision to go mandatory mask, the trend of people asking to go on virtual stopped, okay? We, at this point, not really even sure if we need our own virtual academies. I know Jan Stride's not here, but we're looking at different vendors. We would prefer not to do it ourselves, because that would ask a teacher to do a planning period. We'll pay them, of course, but still, they need to plan, they need to rest. But that's how we would do it, okay? So I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but I'm saying right now, we're not, we don't, we don't have the, we feel like we could cover through the two virtual vendors that we're using. And K-12, Inc., although we've been saying it's elementary, just by the name, it goes up to the 12th grade, okay? But I don't want to give you the impression, I will let you know in two weeks, if we're going to, if we do have children that are going to be taught by our staff for a virtual experience. So because of time, I'll just end there. And I always invite you to visit the schools. And I think, again, it's a good place to be. Maybe my other last grandfather advice, and some of you do it all the time, and all of you do it at least a few times. I would recommend for board comments, let's focus on something positive before we get into what some of the concerns are. Because if you just watched the Stafford School Board meetings the last few months, you would think nothing well is going on, and we got a lot of great things going on. And so I think we could model that behavior by just pick something that you're proud of, give somebody a shout out. Anyway, I offer you that. My grandson, Jordan, he will be tired of me eventually when I keep giving him this advice, when I know he could actually listen. But anyway, thank you, guys.
No, let's try and keep going at this point. All right, is there a motion for the consent items?
Motion to approve the consent item.
Second.
It moved in second, and any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next one is our action item, two action items, but first one, Dr. Warner.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve, to adopt the FY23 Budget Development Calendar with, by setting the school board work session time for August 17th at 6:30 PM, and by adding the PTA, PTO meeting with the school board and superintendent to discuss budget considerations for September 23rd.
Second a motion?
All right. It's been seconded, I'll let Ms. Hall sort out who it was. Any further discussion on that item?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why, maybe I missed it, why we're moving from the 21st to the 23rd?
Because we already have the meeting on the 21st.
Oh, for the other, okay. And then what are the times for the joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors?
Chris isn't here.
I just ask that we get told what the times are, at least for the.
With regard to the.
Yeah, for those meetings, so we can put them on our calendar and we actually know when we need to be around for those meetings, so. I certainly, the ones that are after January could wait till January, but the one that's in, is it October?
October.
Yeah, I'd like to know what time we're going to be meeting with them.
Madam Chair, I was told by the Board of Supervisors clerk a few weeks ago that the one in October on the 19th is at 5:15, and it'll be a dinner meeting.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll get the other start times as well for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That addition. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Who will be the delegates at the V S B A Annual Convention? Or can we pick somebody and?
I'll volunteer.
All right.
If it's all right.
Sure. Unless anybody really wants to do it.
Volunteers are good.
All right.
I'll be her alternate.
All right. All right, so.
Thank you.
All right, so does anyone want to make a motion, please?
Move to appoint Dr. Warner for the delegate to the V S B A Annual Convention 2021, and Ms. Randall as her alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Information item, first one, 12.01. This is regarding four contracts for food, milk, bread, and non-grocery items using budgeted FY nutrition funds. Any questions?
I'm hearing from various folks, and I don't know, you know, you hear things, you don't necessarily know if they're accurate, but that children are receiving, you know, food and then just throwing it away because they don't really want it, and it's not very tasty. So I don't know, I just want to make sure we aren't purchasing a lot of food that our students aren't actually eating.
Since it's so late, we can make sure that we have appropriate staff. And please know, I don't want staff to feel bad that they've been here.
That's fine, that's fine.
Make sure we have that covered. All right. 12.02 is about the replacement of two chillers at Park Ridge Elementary School. I'm going to look probably to Mr. Anderson or someone, if there are any questions.
It's not a question, it's, well, yeah, it is a question. I wanted to know, was this one that we talked about, that you wanted it early for this, to put it in in the summer? I mean, we're here already in fall. Like, what was the time period for this?
Chillers get changed in the winter, because that's when they're not used.
Okay, so it's no rush for that? Okay.
Madam Chair, can I make a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one comment that I thought was kind of interesting, was that this assessment that this Park Ridge chiller needed to be replaced was in 2007, and it's now 2021. So I'm very appreciative of Mr. Anderson's ability to make some magic happen on the 3R list, but I just was kind of thrown back a little bit, that the assessment was in 2007, the work is 21. That's not good.
And it's only for part of what the assessment requested?
Can I ask, do we know what kind of warranty there is on this chiller that we're putting in?
Two.
Two chillers that we're putting in?
I know it's going to be a good warranty, and I don't have that information in my hand.
Could we get that next time? Because I'm hearing from some constituents that are concerned that we do work, there's a warranty, but then the company is no longer around because we went with the lowest bidder, and so what's going on with that? So I'd just like to know what the warranty is.
Okay, I'll let you know.
All right. 12.03, this is our capital improvement, oh, excuse me, program and the 3R infrastructure. Come on down.
Good evening. Chairperson Hazard, members of the school board, Dr. Kizner. Okay, so this evening's presentation. There we go. The purpose of tonight's presentation is for me to update you on what's new in the CIP landscape. So in terms of some of the new things that we have going on, firstly, we have two new large capital projects on the proposed Large Capital Projects List. Secondly, with regard to the 3R projects, there have been three projects added. We have a phased approach going for Drew, Hartwood, and Gary Melchers. And additionally, there's been a change in the county's assumptions and their inflation factor. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So due to increased prices for labor and construction materials, as well as a slow supply chain, the county had to adjust their inflation factors. And what we have in this slide is the inflation rate for 2022, fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023. What I want to do is just sort of point out one of the obvious outliers on this slide. So if you were to look at project inflation for FY22 in gray, you see that it's 4.5% where it says years affected for the first three years, and then 3% for the last seven years. Conversely, if you look down at the same information for the update, we see that it's increased to 12%. So that's really the, and that's only for the first year, but then 3.5% for the last nine years. So that's one of sort of the big outliers in their assumptions and their changes, is to sort of compensate for the drastic changes in prices. That was what was done in this year's assumptions. And, you know, if you're interested in seeing the others, this information is available for you to see where the differences are. And of course, it's relevant to us, because as these inflation factors change, it changes the cost of projects in our CIP as well as in our 3R project list. So that's sort of the relevance of this information. So speaking to that, oh, before I get to this slide, I also want to mention, with regard to the assumptions and the inflation factors, they can change annually based on current economic conditions. So if economic conditions improve, supply chain gets better next year, the inflation factors and so forth can adjust. So this slide, we're talking about the proposed Large Capital Projects List, planning staff worked with the F A B C on July 22nd to develop this list. Just to point out a couple of interesting facts, the first six projects on this list are identical to the school board's approved Large Capital Project list last year. No change in the priority order of the first six projects. What's new is Elementary School 19 and High School Number 7, they've been added to the list. And in the county's FY 2022 CIP, they recognize, of course, our need for more seats. And they have provided, at least in that CIP, some funding for this school and at least recognize the need for these two schools. And so we agree that, yes, we need these schools, and this is the order on the list. What I'd like to get from you is your feedback, if you have any questions or concerns on the priority of any of these ranked projects on the list, or any other questions related to these large capital projects.
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Randall.
So I'm not going to say that I recognize that there's a change in ranking. So these ranking, and, correct me if I'm wrong, these are not the ranking as to what goes first or what goes second? Is that what this ranking is?
The dates sort of align that way, yes. So in terms of priority, last year, we said the high school was first, and that's true this year.
So what happened to, what happened to Hartwood renovation? Because I recall that because Ferry Farm was a renovation, Hartwood was going to be a renovation. Now we're talking about land and making sure that the land is large enough to put an elementary school on it. And Embry Mill is busting at the seams, and there needs to be a school in the north. And I'm not sure if this Elementary School 18 is the school that's supposed to be in Embry Mill versus are we now went from renovation to Hartwood to a new school in Hartwood? I'm kind of, if you could explain that to me a little bit, like, where are, I mean, I'm not saying there's anything on here that says this is the location, but what's the intent here?
Okay, so the intent, well, let me just back up. So with Hartwood, I believe last year, the Hartwood project was removed from the Large Capital Project list and put on the 3R list. So that explains why Hartwood is not included here. And then your next question was related to.
So this elementary school?
Yes, ma'am.
18. Do we have a location for it? It was just on here saying that the school in 2026.
No, that hasn't been designated.
Okay, and then Drew, wasn't Drew higher up? I know we debated Drew for a while here. I know the year is August 2026. Are we saying that that's the reason I'm asking about the ranking? Is ranking three, it's behind Elementary School 18? Or are we going to try to get things done in the renovation prior to 2026?
In terms of the ranking, I believe last year, this is the same order. If you look at the requested opening date, the elementary and Drew are, were asked to be opened by August 2026. So John, if you want to help me with the Drew renovation, is there, have there been expedited?
Yes, we have the comprehensive plan being produced now. That takes some time, we've been working on that. And we have meetings with the principals of Hartwood and Drew coming up to discuss the preliminary recommendations. So right now, we have 3R projects that we are adding for Drew, and we're keeping this large cap. We're working with the consultant to try to get the best estimates we can for this report. But this is going to be ongoing, and we'll also, we're updating this request every year. And sometimes, we're sort of in the middle of it, like we are right now, because we just funded this comprehensive study for Drew and Hartwood. Also, there are 3R projects being added for Hartwood, and you'll see more about that on August 24th. We'll have more information about the 3R list.
Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen. I appreciate that information. Very helpful.
Ms. Healy.
I'm just curious about this Elementary School 19 being in 2031. Does that say we're not going to be over 100% capacity in our middle school projections before 2031?
Okay, you've really confused me a little bit with that question. So you said the elementary.
So you said the elementary school 19, that's slated for August 2031, but then you said something about the middle school.
No, no, the, I didn't mean to say something about middle school, I'm sorry, it is late. My question is, the, we generally put the year down there for the requested opening date based on the enrollment projections.
Yes.
And I know we've got to be very close now for enrollment. Does anybody have our numbers for enrollment, current, this year's enrollment elementary percentage?
What I can, well, what I can communicate with you is, in terms of the opening date, it was tied to, for elementary school, the program capacity exceeding 100%, and then for the middle and high school, it was the design capacity. With the exception of high school number six, it's going to exceed its 100% in 2023, but that school isn't slated to open until August 2025. But all the other projects are based on 100% capacity, and again, it varies whether it's program or design.
Okay, well, then that, that explains it. For whatever reason, I would have thought we would exceed 100% capacity in elementary schools before 2031, you know, after elementary school 18 is built. So that's good. So once we build elementary school 18, we're projecting we've got five more years before we get to 100% capacity.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's good news. I'll be surprised, but-
Right, and this is based on-
I won't be sitting here, I can assure you of that.
Sure you will.
Well-
Sure you will.
I think you understand that this is your priorities, it may not align with the priorities of the Board of Supervisors, so you may have August 2026 for the 18th elementary school. I think they have another date in mind, so that's part of the conversation you, you guys have to really have soon, because there's a big difference between when you want it and when they feel like it's, needs to be built.
And as we used before, and I, I, I think that's very nice of you to put school board requested opening date, I truly think we have to have the column of the need date. This is the date it goes to 100% capacity, and that, if it's 2023 for high school, we need to show it. I'm sorry, we just, we got to be honest with our figures, too. I get that we can't open it in two years, I completely understand that, and we can put that as the requested, but to what we're saying, if, when we get our September 30 figures and high school, I mean, elementary 18, or pick any project here, we look at that, run the numbers, and we say, well, we think this is the realistic date, and I'm saying that in quotation marks, but we need the need by date in there. I truly liked when we did it that way, because it also proved, it showed to us when, because the first question we're always asked is, we'll prove it. Okay, on our chart, on this date, we get to 100% capacity in 2024, or whatever the date is. I would just suggest that we continue that, or at least have something that shows, that tracks with where we're coming up with the figures, or the requested date. I think it's important for us to do it, and to be able to prove why we're saying it. And I will be interested as we go forward and see what our September 30 number ends up being.
Yeah.
Dr. Chase?
So I don't know if we're open to general questions yet? Yep, so the, you know, with this change to the inflation level, then all of the projects become more expensive, and the supervisors, when we've gone over to visit them, they have sort of said, this is our, you know, this is how much debt capacity we have, and so this is what we can fund each year, and we can't go over that debt capacity, or we will no longer maintain our triple A, triple A bond rating. So what are the ramifications of this increase in, I mean, have you all heard from, anything from, from staff on the other side of the street about, are we not going to be able to fund these projects as we currently have them, because there will not be the debt capacity to do that?
That process is sort of underway now, and in your CIP calendar, I believe, and it'll, actually, it's my next slide, so if I can just jump for a second. So the T R C will review the proposed CIP projects, and I, it's my guess at that time, the, they'll start to begin the process of figuring out what we can afford, definitely in October, by that, probably that October 19th meeting, we'll start to hear more feedback. At this point, we've been provided these inflation rates and have been asked to update our numbers based on that, and so that's where we are now, but that will, we'll find out that information you're asking in a little bit.
I think it's important for the public to pay attention to that, because we could find ourselves in a situation where we're, we're being told that we can't get these projects done because there aren't the funds.
Right, and one thing I would like to point out, for us, it works out that we don't have a large capital project next year, fiscal year 2023, because remember that 12% in the first year? That's only the first year. So if you look at the difference, it goes from 3% to 3.5% when a lot of our projects are coming on, so it really only went up about a half a percentage point.
So what you're telling me is this 150 million for the high school is only if it, if it were opening in 2023?
No.
No?
No, what I'm saying is that it was originally 141, but with the inflation, and this is numbers we've, we've received, that I've received, this is going to be the adjusted price.
150.
150, and that's not just inflation, but the other costs, if I just flip back here, in terms of project inflation, project management, all these other factors, the numbers have adjusted.
Thank you.
Mr. White, I recall the T R C having, the T R C having a specific statistics or formula that they were using when they're calculating these things, and we did, I know I did request that we pair it where it's equal, what we're looking at and how we're calculating versus how they're doing it, that we're seeing the same thing. Have we done that? And I know that you're part of that, right? So are, is their calculation still different than ours? That's my question. Are we comparing apples and apples when we-
Yes, I think you're speaking about the criteria that's used.
Yes, yes.
So our criteria is a little bit different, and our process is a little bit different, because we're really working more internally with our operations and maintenance group, we're looking at facilities, condition assessments, we're looking at capacity for schools. So their criteria on the T R C, and I'm on that, and Lionel participates in these as well, are really more focused on broad county projects. And I think they still run into this limit, which is the biggest issue.
Yeah.
And it's the issue they have for the roads, it's the issue we have for the schools, is when you run into the limit, then, at least the last year, they were saying we couldn't build these projects fast enough, and that's a real problem. So I think the priorities are important, but really, this limit they're running into is, is causing delays on a lot of really important projects, including the schools that we need to build soon.
Yeah, because I thought that when we went over there to give them the presentation, Mr. White gave, you gave them the presentation so that they could better understand how we're looking and how we're getting to our criteria and our calculations. That didn't change their, their-
It doesn't really change their criteria, and our projects are mixed in with the county projects, so that criteria is really meant for all types of county projects, whereas we're using our criteria to rank only school projects, and our criteria is really clear, we're looking like at capacity, which is obviously a big concern for the schools and for the county.
So maybe I'm not being clear?
I think I understand.
Okay.
Are you talking, are you referring to, when we were talking about program capacity and design capacity?
Correct, and so therefore, when, when they're saying, no, you do need this, or you don't need that, they're looking at their criteria versus we're looking at it a different way.
Right.
The presentations and all the stuff that you've talked to them, did not change their perception, to say, okay, when we are talking about the schools building, we have to go along with how they're looking at it, with their criteria, not their own.
Right, we're working with them very closely, we've, so in their ear now, they're aware that we're using program capacity for elementary school.
Okay.
And in a draft document that I saw, I did notice a reference to program capacity in the comprehensive plan in a draft version. So it may be that they are accepting, willing to accept that.
Okay.
We'll find out more.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't they lob like 25 million off of our high school? But did they put it back, or is that just?
To the best of my knowledge, that has not been added back, no.
So this 150 million is what we expect it to cost, but the county expects it to be 25 million less?
Well, I just want to make sure-
This is our request.
This is our request based on the county's inflation.
Right, and based on our, what we're, you know, our, our anticipated need.
Right.
But the county's value for that construction project is less, correct? What they have, they have ranked it at.
Yes, I believe the last number was 125 million, and our number was 141 million plus additional off-site costs of 12 million.
Right.
And so that still has to be worked out.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions at this time? All right, hearing none. Let's see, the next one is regarding the Head Start Policy Council. I know this doesn't have to come up till next time, but-
Madam Chair, I have spoken to Ms. Massey and the Head Start, and I would like to stay on for another year if that's not, if there's a-
You can hold that till the next one, but if anybody-
Put down the consent.
Ms. Healy, I thought you were interested.
I wouldn't want to take it from Dr. Warner.
It's, it is actually very rewarding, I love it.
It is, actually, it's very rewarding.
I love it.
I understand why you want to do it.
Now I sort of understand what I'm doing, so I figure I'm half-trained.
Understood. All right, the next one is going to be for the authorization for any newly elected board members to attend the V S B A, we can deal with that next time. Other than that, we are adjourned, and I will see you all next Tuesday, 6:30.
Thank you.